Good morning, everybody. Thank you for joining us on our regular meeting of May 19th, 2015. Could we take the roll?
President.
President.
Here.
President.
Present.
Yes, present.
We have Reverend Yamoto Yusen here, Japanese Buddhist monk, to lead us in a prayer. Thank you.
Global Peace Walk. Twenty-one anniversary. United Nations Seven Years' anniversary. Our future generations pray. I'm concerned about our future. I'm concerned about our human life. I pray for the all living beings. I pray for earth, water, fire, air, and the global community. I'm concerned about our future. I'm concerned about our human life. Thank you today being here. The whole corner of the universe. To our prayer. Someday, each other side of the universe. To bring a symbol of peace. The knowledge of mind. Thank you today invite city council. This globe is all five elements suffering. These five elements is a human last resolve. Our vision of life look like a blue mountain. Never move. White cloud all way come. I pray for the global peace. Wonderful blessing. The beautiful relationship.
Thank you very much, sir, for that prayer. If we could remain standing, Mr. Fernandez, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, staff, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, under item five, we'd like to add a five B. This week is Emergency Medical Services Week, and the ambulance department and staff will be having a barbecue. And a thank you for our medical staff who provide the service every day to the constituents of Taus County. So we do have that that we would like to do under item B and have the Commissioners sign actually a proclamation for that. But if we could do that.
Thank you, Steve. Any other changes? Not? Do we have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman. Check in.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. On to item number six, Citizens Concerns. Is there anybody who would like to address the board at this time? Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm David Fernandez of Taos, Fernandez de Taos, and I just want to announce that on May the 30th, I'm going to be giving a very good, deep, profound, comprehensive presentation on some of the area's issues, primarily having to do with water, water issues, the kind of focusing around the Abeta Water Rights Settlement. And I'm going to be doing this at the Taos Public Library, or if it can be arranged, at the old Taos County Courthouse. I don't know who I'd need to speak to about arranging for that on May the 30th, Saturday 2:30 in the afternoon or so. So it's going to be very, very good. It's going to be the most in-depth and comprehensive discussion of our area's water rights that we've heard around here in a long, long time. Thanks.
Well, thank you, David. It's a very important issue, and I think you can just arrange it with Brent Haddam Meele for the courthouse on Saturday, May 30th at 2:30. Thank you. May 30th, Saturday.
Mr. Haddam Meele, if you could give Mr. Fernandez your card.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board at this time? Stevens, I'll give you five minutes for your presentation this morning. What do you have for us?
You're always cutting me short, Mr. Blankenhorn. It's getting tiring. When it's dear, Stevens Hall, I spoke at the last commission meeting and have spoken before of this commission's lack of accountability with respect to authorized and necessary oversight with the financial and management affairs of Taos Health Systems Incorporated. Financial and management oversight clearly outlined and provided for in the lease. I spoke of your lack of responsibility in exercising your authority, your duty, and your right on behalf of this community to ensure a proper safeguarding of community assets. And your right on behalf of this community to ensure a proper safeguarding of community assets, those assets being community property embodied in Holy Cross Hospital. That right to ensure proper safeguarding of community assets is a right of this community, a community right, Mr. Blankenhorn. Commissioners, and quote, "THS agrees that this community shall have the right to inspect, examine, and/or make copies of the financial books and records in any and all accounts, financial data, income, and other tax returns of THS insofar as they relate to the financial operations of the hospital," end quote. That is the conclusion of Section 12 Financial Reporting Requirements of THS as stated in the lease and agreed to by Taos Health Systems Incorporated on 28 December 2001. As to the binding nature of the lease and the truthfulness of statements agreed to and contained in the lease, Section 7 Representations and Warranties by THS states, and let me say here, that representation, to represent and warrant means to swear and to promise. Quote, "THS hereby represents and warrants the following." Subsection F Representations and Warranties Correct. All representations and warranties of THS contained in this lease are true and correct or not misleading and do not omit any information necessary to make such statements not misleading in light of the circumstances under which they were made. Subsection G Obligation to Pay and Perform Unconditional. THS acknowledges that the obligation to make the rent payments and other payments due under this lease and to perform the other agreements herein shall be absolute and unconditional and shall not be subject to diminution by set off, counterclaim, restatement, or otherwise. Is there anything you don't understand, anything that's not clear, any lack of specificity concerning the lease clauses I've cited, Mr. Blankenhorn? I believe you're an attorney, though I don't know that for fact, but merely as a consequence of hearsay. Black's Law Dictionary defines a lease as a contract and a contract as, quote, "an agreement between two or more persons which creates an obligation to do or not to do a particular thing." As defined in Restatement 2, Contracts, Section 3, "A contract is a promise or a set of promises for the breach of which the law gives a remedy or the performance of which the law in some way recognizes as a duty." A lease is a contract. A lease is a promise. You as individuals and as a commission stand derelict in your duties and your responsibilities to this community and derelict in the exercise of community rights with respect to the hospital lease. Your inattention, your disregard, your lack of respect for your duties and responsibilities to this community, and your lack of respect for rights, for community rights, is shameful. With respect to the lease, Section 11 Equipment and Other Personal Property says, quote, "Any equipment owned by the county in the existing facility as well as new equipment purchased with proceeds from bonds or other obligations issued by the county shall collectively be referred to as the county equipment described in Exhibit D attached here too. THS agrees that any equipment or other property purchased or leased with county funds shall be purchased or leased by THS as agent for the county," end quote. Section 11 further says with respect to equipment and property lists, quote, "THS agrees to keep and annually update its list of county equipment and county property and to deliver copies thereof to the county," end quote. The county's response to my request to inspect those property lists required to be furnished by THS says, quote, "Taos County is not in possession of any records responsive to this request." More directly, end quote, "More directly, more to the point, the lists were never created by THS and were never delivered to Taos County as agreed to by THS, a promise unfulfilled and broken. I say Taos County has little or no knowledge of what belongs to this community with respect to Holy Cross Hospital." Section 11 goes on to say with regard to THS equipment, quote, "Upon written request by the county to THS, THS shall provide the county with a copy of its fixed asset list generally describing all the equipment owned or leased by THS," end quote. My request to inspect THS's fixed asset list was again met with the county response, quote, "Taos County is not in possession of any records responsive to this request," end quote. Section 12 Financial Reporting Requirements of THS says, quote, "THS shall during the term of this lease provide the county annually within 30 days after its receipt by THS an audited and certified balance sheet and statement of earnings of THS and shall provide honor before the 30th of the first month following each fiscal quarter of THS a review statement of earnings for such fiscal quarter," end quote. THS agreed to and is required to provide the county annually an audited and certified balance sheet.
Thank you, Stephen. The five minutes is up. If you'd like to finish up with a conclusion, then that'll be fine.
As well as a quarterly statement of earnings for every fiscal quarter of Taos Health Systems Incorporated. I say these requirements, these obligations agreed to and promised by THS have never been met by THS, and am awaiting confirmation of my statement. Section 12 goes on to say, quote, "THS shall provide periodically upon request by the county but not more frequently than annually a copy of THS's budget. Upon my request to inspect copies of THS's annual budget, the county respond to Taos County is not in possession of any records responsive to this request. Never has a THS budget been requested nor has THS ever furnished the county with a copy of its budget." I'll conclude, Mr. Blankenhorn. You said at the last meeting you were satisfied with the explanation regarding the prepayment. Despite Mr. Blankenhorn's statement, quote, "We are satisfied," end quote, I am not satisfied. I wonder firstly who "we" is. Is we the mantle of royal we that Mr. Blankenhorn assumes? Is we the commission alone or the commission and THS united as one? When I ask for accountability from THS and for financial and management oversight of THS by the county in response to Mr. Blankenhorn's question, quote, "What is it you would have us do, Mr. Hall?" Mr. Blankenhorn replied disingenuously, quote, "Well, all right. Thank you for that suggestion," end quote. I am not satisfied. I say every documented transgression with regard to the hospital lease is an injustice perpetrated upon this community. Do you not believe contracts should be honored, promises kept, Mr. Blankenhorn? Do you believe this community or any community is not bound by binding agreements, that we need not heed our promises to one another? Is that what you would demonstrate and have taught to this community's children? I am not satisfied, Mr. Blankenhorn.
Okay, thank you, Stevens. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the board?
Last paragraph, please, Mr. Blankenhorn. It's seven lines long.
Seven lines? Okay, Stevens.
In his speech, quote, "Where do we go from here?" End quote, Martin Luther King addressed social, political, and economic inequality and injustice and spoke of divine dissatisfaction. He said in addressing those inequalities and injustices, "We have a task and let us go out with a divine dissatisfaction. Let us be dissatisfied. Let us be dissatisfied until from every city hall justice will roll down like waters and righteousness like a mighty stream." I want the justice of financial and management oversight by Taos County of Taos Health Systems Incorporated and the justice of a contract honored, Mr. Blankenhorn. Gracias.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the board? Yes, sir. Please step up. State your name.
My name is Jason Pfeiffer. Good morning. I just want to take a minute of your time and let you know about a 5K/10K run walk we're doing June 13th to support the Cancer Support Services Program. We've helped over 300 families with non-medical support that are experiencing cancer. We pay for gasoline, food, massage, anything that helps promote healing and ease stress for families that are experiencing cancer. So I just wanted to let you know about the event. It's our fifth annual. We need your support. This is our largest fundraiser we do throughout the year, and without this money, we wouldn't be helping our local residents that are experiencing and struggling with cancer. So come out and please participate if you can, and that goes for everyone in the room as well, especially Darren in the back who's a runner. I know you're a runner. All right. Thank you all. If you don't mind, I'd like to give you all a brochure.
Please do.
Thanks.
And what's the date again?
June 13th. The race starts at, or run/walk starts at 8:00 AM at the Youth and Family Center, and you can sign up at taoshealth.com online beforehand, create a team. There's lots of ways to participate.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Thank you for your work.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Pfeiffer, I will be unable to attend. I will be up in Pinellasco for the cultural celebration on that day. Perhaps you could give the viewing audience the phone number for people who may need your cancer support services. You said you provide money for gas and you help them out. So could you please provide that phone number?
Absolutely. 575-751-8927 or 75, or, I'm sorry, 575-613-4855. And we provide up to $800 per year in these support services.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the board? If not, then we'll move on to item five, which is Awards and Presentation. A is a presentation of Employee of the Month for the month of May 2015 awarded to Moises Sanchez, Public Works Department.
Good morning, Commissioners, members of the audience. Today it's my privilege to speak on Moises Sanchez. Moises Sanchez was nominated by his fellow employees and selected by the Employee Action Committee as the Taus County's Employee of the Month for May 2015. Congratulations to Moises. You're being recognized for your outstanding efforts and dedication to your position as a road maintenance operator, too. Moises was hired on June 20th, 2011. He's been a great asset to the Public Works Department, his coworkers, and to the general public. No matter what job he is doing, writing a road, dealing with drainage issues, operating machinery, fixing equipment, plowing snow at 3:00 in the morning, he is always willing to go above and beyond to get the job done right. Moises is very responsive, hardworking, knowledgeable of what needs to be done in each season. He always has great suggestions and a great attitude. Taus County is grateful to have Mr. Sanchez as an employee. Thank you, Moises, for all your hard work and dedication. You are greatly appreciated. We'd like to present Moises Sanchez with this plaque of Employee of the Month for May 2015. It reads in grateful appreciation for your outstanding performance. We hereby recognize and honor Moises Sanchez this 19th day of May 2015. Signed, Tom Blankenhorn, Chairman, and Steven Archuleta, County Manager. Thank you, Moises.
Thank you.
Along with that, we'd like to give Moises a certificate for one day paid day off.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioners, I would also like to thank Moises on behalf of all the employees from the Public Works, myself, for the outstanding job he has done for us. Thank you, Moises. (applause)
Yes, we do have a proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. The proclamation reads, "Whereas emergency medical services are vital to the public service and whereas members of our emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those who need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical service system consists of emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of our emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours in specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the compliments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Service Week, and now therefore it be resolved that the Taus County Board of Commissioners in recognition of this event do hereby proclaim the week of May 17th through May 23rd, 2015 as Emergency Medical Services Week."
(applause)
I'd like to say a few words.
Well, thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, everybody in attendance this afternoon, or this morning, actually. We've been up all night. These guys have been up all night running calls. But again, like Mr. Archuleta said, we invite you, the Commissioners, general public, to come and meet your emergency medical technicians and paramedics. We'll be having a barbecue. We usually end the, end of the week with the barbecue. It's usually held at the EMS building, but it's getting a little bigger every year. And so with the, thanks to Mr. Archuleta on the county, we're going to have it out here in the front this year. We'll have all of our equipment present, both fire and EMS equipment outside, trying to get maybe one of our local air medical transport units also to come out and support us. But, you know, these guys and gals are one of the top in the state, and I'm very proud of them. And it goes not just for my emergency medical technicians and paramedics, but my support staff as well. Unfortunately, they're busy processing payments and bills, and Darlene and her staff couldn't be here this morning, but I want to thank them as well. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your work, all of you. It's an important job. We really appreciate you being out there.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, when is the barbecue?
That'll be on Friday, the 22nd, from 11:00 to 1:00.
All right, go get some sleep.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next is seven minutes. A, Approval of the April 28th Special Meeting Minutes. No, I just flipped them around mistakenly, but now we're back on track, on to item seven. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes of April 28th special meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question first. On page six of eight, there was a part that it says, a lot of our comments were inaudible regarding the...
Mm-hmm.
It hit us with a ruler like she does. Okay, I just was wondering, because my comment was that the gross receipts option, everybody pays for it, not just the property owners. I'm not speaking to the microphone again, so I'll, I'll learn one of these days. Thank you. So I'll just, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll go ahead and second, Mr. Chairman.
Call for the vote? Yes.
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 Mr. Chairman, real quick, maybe Mr., our attorney can comment on meetings that not, that are not understandable. How do we, I mean, we just approved them, but if someone wants to go into the record and they have a problem with understanding as to what was said, how do we deal with circumstance like that?
That's a matter that if it's inaudible, we can't recreate unless you choose as a commission to fill in the inaudible in your approval of the minutes.
Kind of what I just did.
So maybe, Mr. Chairman, is it a matter of maybe getting more equipment to be able to record us? Passed out. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just to respond to Commissioner Romero's concern, we are getting an assessment and some codes done for wireless communications within the commission chambers. And we should have that within the next month or two.
Thank you.
All right. We'll look forward to that at our next special meeting, Dan, hopefully. On to item B, which is the approval of the May 5th regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fambro.
On page eight of 22, it says Jim Fambro already set up a meeting with Stacy Maguire and Stella Gallegos. It should read that Jim Fambro has requested a meeting be set up with Stacy Maguire and Stella Gallegos.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners.
I so move we approve the May 5th regular meeting minutes with Commissioner Fambro's suggestions, and I also have several...
Corrections, corruption.
On page seven, the ninth line, in reference to Mr. Harvey Yokum's discussion of stray hearts, he indicated that it was a $205,000 balloon mortgage payment. So if you could add, please, what he had said of $205,000 balloon mortgage payment. Page seven, 12th line, take out Y. Page 16, certified lead is L-E-E-D. And then just for clarification, on page 19, those identified in the picture were Jack R. Fox, Thomas Wagner, and Eloy Gentet. And with that, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to ask that if you guys do have changes, if you could email them, that way it would make it easier to flow through just approving instead of bringing them all up here. Suggestion. Thanks.
Thank you. We would, yeah, that'd be good for staff. Of course, we'd reiterate them in the open meeting for the record. Great.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll go ahead and second. Mr. Chairman.
Off the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. On to item seven, or rather, eight. Presentations. A is a discussion regarding the Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area. Tomas Romero, Executive Director. Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, good morning to you and members of the commission. There are a couple of people that are here in support of the presentation that I wanted to introduce, and I think... to introduce, and I think they both wanted to make a brief statement, if that is all right, Kathy Cordova and David Fernandez, David is on our board right now, and Kathy was the first president of, of the organization back when it was established, and she wanted to start, and then I'll get into my presentation, which you all have, and on the, on the panels as well, if that's all right.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Ms. Cordova.
Good morning, members of the Commission, Tomas, thank you for allowing me this opportunity. My presentation is mainly going to deal with the history of the heritage area, so that you understand it a little better. The Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area was a very, very grassroots effort, it was started for three counties, Santa Fe, Rio Reba, and Taos County, so we have a lot of involvement. Taos's involvement started at the Sagebrush Inn, there was something in the paper, you know, if any of you are interested, and they talked about preserving traditions, your heritage, that sort of thing, if you're interested in this, please attend this meeting at the Sagebrush with Ernesto Ortega, who was working at the Park Service at the time, he was a superintendent, so we nicknamed him the Padreino of the Heritage Area. When we met at the Sagebrush, Mayor Pedalta was the mayor then, and he said, "If any of you, after this presentation, are interested in serving, give me your names, and then I will pick somebody," so I was the lucky one, I think, I got picked, and then Mary Mascarenas from Piñasco was also a member. Later on, we asked for partnerships with different groups, and Gabriel's sitting there thinking, "I remember, I was a member too," Commissioner Romero was a member representing Taos County, and Elinda Gonzalez was representing Taos City Government, so we had quite a bit of involvement there. Then later, Juanita Cordova came on board, and we had a lot of other members, and one of our members, David Fernandez, will be speaking, we also have Chris Madrid on that board now. We had our first meeting in Espaniola with the three counties, and then we had to select the executive committee, the members, that sort of thing, and I became the first president, I served three terms as president. After we started getting organized, we had a lot of things to do, Mary Mascarenas was a secretary, and I think her minutes were like this, we set to work right away, doing things like planning, the bylaws, working with partners, that's when Taos County came in, we had training by the staff of the Park Service, we went to two conferences, and they were national conferences, one was in Santa Fe, Mosaic in Motion, it was a Park Service function, and then some of us got to go to Atlanta, so I got to go there, it was kind of funny, the Santa Fe Conference, I was a participant, and one of the Park Service people came up real quick, like said, "Please, please, be on the panel," and I said, "What? We have a panel of journalists, and the guy from the New Mexican didn't show up, and I wish you would come," so I got to be on the panel, and it was kind of interesting, because there was this man that was a city editor in Atlanta, Georgia, and so he talked about, they were talking about trying to get publicity for your area, he talked about how he comes to choose these things, and then I was from the standpoint of the freelancer who submits these articles, and what I try and do to get in there, so it was kind of a neat balance, and then we had newspaper people in there, so I learned a lot about not only newspapers, but other things, too. Then, when we, it was time to look at our bill, we had the biggest champion, who is now retired, Senator Jeff Bingaman, Jeff Bingaman was the chairman of a subcommittee that was supposed to hear testimony, because he was the chairman, we got to have two representatives, not just one, on the testimony, so Josevia and I went ahead and gave our testimony, we also turned in letters of support, including Taos County, so you people are up town, you are in the congressional record with your letter of support. Because of my dad's illness, I had to take a leave, and then I saw that he was just going to, my dad lingered for three years before he passed away, so I had to withdraw, but I kept getting occasional emails, conversations with Mary, and I kept up with the heritage area, and it's still in my heart, even though I'm not in the board, like my former students, three of you are up there right now, know that you can't get rid of Mrs. C. because she keeps coming back, while the heritage area also can't get rid of me, I have written stories about it for La Indencia, Ayerigoy, the Taos News, I will continue writing wonderful stories about it, because I think it's great, I was very fortunate that I wrote a grant, one of the things that the heritage area wanted to do was to preserve, and how better than to do grants, so I was the chairman of the Taos Historic Museums Board, and I wanted to thank the heritage area again, they funded the Tierra Blanca in the large living room, the large sala, but they didn't just go and say, "Okay, we're going to cement this thing," they are about education, and since I'm an educator, I like that, they went and made an educational deal out of it, so the public could come, they could watch Felipe Santi Esteban doing the mudding, and talking to him, answering questions, and it ended up being an educational opportunity for the community, which I think is wonderful. Also, the heritage area was one of the sponsors of the El Prado book, and you people know I came before you, because we did not want El Prado annexed, we were trying to fight that, and we did a historic book, and we showed that one-third of the people in our cemetery were born in the 1800s, so we are a very traditional old community, and the heritage area helped us with sponsorship of that. It took a literal act of Congress, no kidding, you know how you say, "Oh, it takes an act of Congress to get this done," this one did, and the bill was passed October 12, '26, 2006, I wasn't at the office then, but you know what, I did a little toast, so you all know that, this was worth the effort, it's an opportunity to network with others from the three county areas, help each other with our common interests, and like many mothers, I feel like I gave birth to a big baby, the heritage area, and I am enjoying the opportunity to watch it grow and mature, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, for the history, and for all you ex-students, there will be a quiz, so be prepared. Good morning, David.
Good morning, again, it's always a great, great day, wherever we happen to be, and again, our, our thanks to Kathy and all the other people who have, had been involved in the formation of the Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area, I'll be very brief, again, we want to give a great hand of appreciation to Tomas Romero, our Executive Director, who has carried this forward, and through his efforts, a little bit of help from other people involved, we received all the necessary credentialing and recognition from the National Park Service to be a fully functioning, fully outfitted, ongoing forward, national heritage area, one of many around the country, but ours here in northern New Mexico is, in my opinion, probably just about tops, because of the nature of the culture, the heritage that we have here to preserve and to carry forward, I think oftentimes, in the minds of a lot of people who come here to visit, or moved here recently, sometimes they view things that we have done here over the last several hundred years, a lot of them view it as something that's kind of sliding away into the past, well, let me say here right now very clearly that that's not the case, and, matter of fact, go so far as to say there's really no such thing as the past, per se, because one moment leads into another, and one moment affects the next one coming up, so whether it's religious traditions, like, you know, the moradas, or, or the water and land issues here, like the aseca's, or water transfers, or all, all the many, many, many things that make up this very unique area culturally, in terms of heritage, and so forth, I'm pleased to say, right now, we have on our board, and people working on this along with Tom, people who are determined and infused with a mission to carry forward, and to make sure that our heritage, our history, in all of its ramifications and facets, are not lost, but carry forward and contribute to change, sometimes people will say, "Ah, you know, change happens, change happens," the thing is, yes, change happens, but change that affects us here needs our involvement in helping to effectuate that change, in other words, somebody from the outside coming in with a great, big, bright idea cannot really expect to, or imagine that, can turn things topsy-turvy all of a sudden, the things that are here, and we who are here, as the people, as the culture, as the heritage, we are, and we always will be involved in the way that change occurs here, and so let there be no mistake about that, no matter what comes up, whether it's water, or, most importantly, the spirit that we have here, that is something that we carry forward, and for that, we give thanks to the people who are working on this, I'm one of the members from Taos, Vernon Lujan from Taos Pueblo is another member from Taos, Mary Mascarenas, and also Chris Madrid, Taos, kind of between Taos County and Rio Reba County, so with that, thank you for recognizing us, and I'll turn it over to our most excellent and exemplary Executive Director, Tom Romero, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez, good morning again, Mr. Romero, thanks for coming up the canyon and visiting with us today, making this presentation.
I wanted to, first of all, extend, Mr. Romero, hello from Liz Stefanics, she asked me to say hello to you, and members of the Commission, we had met, and I'm going to kind of go through quickly, you have, I believe, we put a packet together for you that has the, the presentation, and it also has some other handouts that I thought you might like to have, I met last week with Mr. Archuleta, County Manager, and, and Mr. Haramillo, and we, we had a great discussion about where we might be going with, with this collaboration, and that, and that's what we tend to look for, the, Kathy mentioned the early, early beginnings of the heritage area, this goes back 30 years now, that the first heritage area throughout the country was established, let me tell you what you have in your packet, so that you can see, on the left-hand side, you should have this picture, what that is, is the management summary from our management plan, the executive summary, there's also a copy of the law, the congressional action that, that put us into place, there's a resolution from the Representatives, from, this one was signed by Representative Debbie Rodella, we received one from the House and from the Senate, acknowledging and, and recognizing the work of, of the heritage area, the existence of it first, and then the work of it, and then there's a photo, and I'd like for you to guys to put that down for later, on the right-hand side, there are some other handouts, they mostly have to do with the work that we have been doing with our grants program, there's a summary from 2009 to 2014, then a summary of this current years, and then there's a couple of photos of an ad that we're going to be running in the Taos Visitors Guide that, that is coming out now, to begin to get the word out about the heritage area. As I said, 30 years ago, the National Heritage Area Program was established through the partnership with the National Park Service, and the purpose of it was that the, the Park Service wanted to extend their reach into the communities, most of the Park Service efforts are in a particular park, a site, and they felt that they were not getting enough representation, and so this idea came out in 1984, the first park, which happened to be, I believe, the Erie Canal, was established, there are 49 national heritage areas throughout the United States, most of them are back east, we are one of six in the Intermountain Region, the only one in New Mexico, three in Colorado, one in Arizona, and one in Utah, and the, the point of it, of the heritage area, was to recognize places within the history, or that represented the history of the United States in some particular fashion, on, on this chart, there's a, a picture of the petroglyph from Mesa Prieta, and just some of the, the key factors leading to the creation of the Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area, the history, the multicultural population, the, the natural resources, and the contribution to the history of the United States, though that is not always recognized, it is a, a key part of what brought it all together, the, the next chart, who will click these? Is it me, oh, you are, great, I'm sorry, on the next chart, I indicated the summary of the creation of, of the heritage area, so in 2006, the Act was passed, we are in partnership with the National Park Service, we are a nonprofit organization that was named in the Act to manage, the management entity, to manage the heritage area, and it does include, I've presented before here in Taos, and I had to tell people that the Rio Grande del Norte Monument is a part, a small part, of the heritage area, we have over 10,000 square miles included within the three county area, so it's a large area that is represented, but it does represent the, the essential population of northern New Mexico, both the native population that goes back 12,000 years, in terms of the settlement here, the Hispanic population going back 500 years, and then, of course, the, the various incomings, or the immigrations from different places, including in, what would that be, 150 years ago, when we were taken over by the United States government, I always like to say that my connection to Taos, though I've had a lot of connection in the past, but I, I like to talk about Tomas Romero, who was the fellow who, along with Pablo Montoya, killed Governor Bent, now, I'm trying to resurrect that, you know, as a, he's a guy to be honored, rather than thought of as a scoundrel, but this area, Taos County, and Rio Reba County, and Santa Fe County, really do represent the cultural heritage of northern New Mexico, you all have a lot that you are doing here, and in each county, we are trying to get the word out about what it is that northern New Mexico does stand for, one of the things that we need to do, and where are we on, sorry, this is a map that you have that shows the areas of the counties, you can see that it does cover a substantial part of the state, and the next chart does show the history of the, both the recorded and unrecorded history of northern New Mexico, where we have a 12,000-year history that goes back to the early hunter-gatherers, and, and the people who settled here, one of the themes that we created for the heritage area when we did our management plan was a cradle of settlement, simply to recognize all of the different cultures that have come through and settled, and left their imprint on northern New Mexico, we are trying to, next, please, we are trying to do these things, strengthen community identity and opportunity, we're trying to foster an appreciation for the history and culture, which hasn't always been the case, sustain the traditional practices, and preserve the natural and cultural resources, and the slogan that the heritage area created for itself was con respeto y permiso, reflecting kind of the way of coming into someone's home, that you do it with respect, you don't come in and just take over, and you do it with permission, so it's not an entitlement, you know, so I am here with your permission, and greatly appreciated that we can have this conversation, I have made a presentation to the other county commissions, Santa Fe and Rio Reba, and in this case, what we are trying to do is to tell you with, with a great deal of pride, that we did get our management plan approved, I know the Rio Grande del Norte National Monument is, is working on theirs right now, ours was approved by the Department of the Interior last year, and so it did qualify us to continue to receive, and to receive a greater amount of federal funds that we distribute, in the early parts, and these are just things for you to have with you, but in the early parts of the formation of the heritage area, there were community meetings that were held throughout the, the heritage area, I, I present here two word chart, word clouds, one- I present here two word clouds, one from Peñasco and another from Taos, where different community members came in and presented what they thought were important things to preserve. The way these word clouds work, I'm sure you've seen them, is the word that gets the most usage is the bigger type and on down. So in Peñasco, there were words like valley and signs and traditional, I think reflecting what the community was, what was important to it, the traditions being accessed, the signage, and then of course, concern about the valley. There was also things about development and buildings and community. So words that are important and reflect what was of utmost interest. In Taos, the words that started to pop out were history and farming and heritage and tourism and community and recreation, another piece that came out. And finally, all of these, there were about six different meetings throughout the heritage area, were summed up. And the next chart shows the relative significance of issues as presented by the community. So the highest one was heritage, then tourism, then land use and agriculture, and finally, recreation. And these formed the basis for the goals that were set up for the heritage area. On the next chart, we list the goals that are in our management plan. I won't go through them all, but they do reflect the need to act on the issues that were of importance in the community meetings. And in our promotional efforts, so what we've been doing, there was the formation, then you had to go out and create the management plan and then to get it approved. But in the meantime, what, there you go, can we, I'm sorry. What we were trying to do was to get recognition before we got recognition. And we did that by doing several things. First, we created a grants program that has been spoken to. We did get the management plan approved and then we continued a series of outreach meetings throughout the last few years, actually getting out into the communities and working with them. In the Taos area, next please. In the Taos area, these are the grants that we provided in the last few years and the details are shown. But you can see some important collaborations. We did one with Mill St. Rogers Museum to fund their Community Day celebration, the Martinez Ascienda, the interior wall renovation that Kathy mentioned, the Taos County Historical Society, digitizing of the Ayeri Oi publication for the last 20 years. That was something that was accomplished this last year. And then the Old Spanish Trail Association, along with the Peñasco and Taos High Schools, created a mural and that's the photo that is in your packet. This mural was dedicated here in Taos last May and I believe it's at the high school. I'm not sure where it is now, but it's a beautiful mural. What was important about it was that the students, and it ended up being mostly Taos High School, they went out into the field, they learned about the location of the Spanish Trail, they learned how to pack burrows, and then they created this representation of the historical Old Spanish Trail.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm wondering if we could put that mural up, please, Mr. Harmio?
If you go to the last slide, I think it's an important one. There it is. This was created in three panels. It's a very colorful one and we're very, very proud of the effort that the students did. We actually unveiled it outside, right out in the courtyard. And the students were here, their parents, and you can see what they had to reflect was how you put burrows together, what life might have been like on the Old Spanish Trail, which is something that started here in this area and in Abiquiu and then went on north and then west to Los Angeles. So a very important trail. And this summer, actually in September, there will be a conference in Santa Fe celebrating that trail, the Old Santa Fe Trail and the Camino Real at a conference in Santa Fe. But anyway, this does show you that we have this chart that we were talking about, the grants, that we have tried to involve the community. There are a couple of other things that we have done with the Taos County Historical Society as far as their records and archives and also with Taos Pueblo. In the new direction, in terms of what we are looking at, the new grants that were issued this year, we were unable to fund everything because we ran out of money. We had so much that was requested. But I've listed the ones here that are for Taos County. And our board made a commitment about a year ago, right after we got the management plan approved, that we wanted to emphasize our relationship with Taos County. And so we've been working at building some of those relationships. But you can see some of the grants that were funded. They, in some respects, they reflect community development, in other celebrations of the community and some of the historical in those that are listed there. The Taos County Historical Society is doing a renovation of the Duran Molino and they've asked for us to fund stabilization piece, which is the first stage, just to make sure one wall doesn't fall apart. A seque de los Lobatos is going to be having a 300th anniversary celebration and our funding would provide some support for the education program that will accompany that. So again, reaching out to youth in the community. Amigos bravos, we're very pleased that we were able to fund some money on the cleanup, the river cleanup that is going on. So that's a grant that we've made. La Morada de Taos has asked for funding to do replastering and we're in the process of getting that established. And then the Taos Land Trust are going to be holding a land issues conference and we're providing some assistance there. The LEAP Conference and Events in Cuesta. And finally, the Village of Peñasco and Commissioner, I noticed that you're going to be there and that's terrific, but we are very, very pleased to help Peñasco. A lot of our work is actually getting out into the communities and working with the communities to help in their development. There is a balance, and in the next chart, I did want to talk about this a little bit. Our challenges, this is for us, getting buy-in and funding support. We do get federal funds. We pass this on primarily in our grants program and in projects, but we also have a requirement that we get matching support. And so we look to establishing partnerships and that's a key part of our legislation, is having partnerships with governmental entities. One of the things that we talked with Mr. Archuleta about was the fact that by having representation on our board from the counties and the cities throughout the area and the communities, we have experienced this wonderful energy that comes with having your representation, you know, say, here's what we're going to do. So you have a voice. David is a community member, but we also have a slot both for the city, for the town of Taos and for the county as part of the governing board of the Rio Grande National Heritage Area. Obviously, I need to be out and get some visibility, you know, but not just for me, it's for the heritage area itself. And then we try to balance the two perspectives. One is the preservation and the other is development. So there are two balancing interests that don't always fit well together. Some people are just anti-having development and others are very much pro. And so we do try to balance those interests. And you can see in the list of grants that we made this year that in fact, we do try to look at how do we celebrate the community, its continuation, and yet support the past and the future in economic development. We've got a couple of programs that I've listed in terms of what we're doing. Like I said, the grants program, we have funded over close to $200,000 in the last five and a half years, which is a large sum considering our budget was only $150,000 a year. So we've put a lot of money into the communities. We've been working, very specifically, I've been working with the Chimalo community to develop their land use plan and their community plan. And there is a film that we did and we'd like to show here in Taos. It's called Land, Water, People, Time. It's a documentary that really just reflects the people in this area. They're part of the history and it's a good way of presenting it. So we will be working to do that. We've upgraded our website and are working on publications to get the word out. But the main story and the main reason for being here was to thank you all as representatives of the county for the work and support that you gave in the past and also to ask for your continued support in the future. And I met with Commissioner Blankenhorn back in December and he made a presentation to our board meeting. We talked about the possibility of our providing some funding support for the old Taos County courthouse. And our board has taken that under consideration and we are committed to working with you. We still need to decide, you know, what amount you all need and what we can put into our budget. But very definitely, the board voted to work with the Taos County Commission to help in that restoration. We had been asked at first to look at the outside ramp. Later, we were asked, well, maybe what we want to do is the lighting inside the room with all the murals, which is just a beautiful piece. And they did not lock me up in the jail. They said that I didn't have to spend too much time there. So it is a project that we would be very proud to partner with Taos County. And like we've done with other counties, we do create an agreement so that, you know, it's documented and what we're doing and that it is a partnership that can be reflected in the community. There was a question. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I was told by Mr. Christopher Madrid that that $20,000 was already awarded for the lighting of the courthouse?
No, that's not true.
No. Okay, so what do we have to do to get that rolling?
What had been requested was an amount and the figure of $20,000 had been thrown out. There was still some work that had to be done within the county, I believe, to come up with a final budget and the actual work that was going to be funded. And so what our board did was to just say, we want to work with the county, we don't have the final figures yet and so we need to do that. But we haven't actually just said, yes, absolutely, write a check, you know, or anything like that. But the commitment is there. It's kind of squirrely what I just said, but I, I mean, that's where the facts are.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
That's fine. We're not all together, we don't have all of our plans to get yet, but when we do, I'm sure we'll be able to forge a partnership.
And we're very, very happy to be part of that. The last two things I wanted to talk about, just to leave the end of it, and it's in your packet, I always think about history and how it gets presented. And in this chart, I just listed that we know history through these types of things, through records and we've worked with your Historical Society on some of the records and with other groups. We recognize it through events and those are often celebrated in community celebrations. We recognize history through the stories that are told and finally, through the images that are left. And the next slide is a quote that I like to use all the time. This is one of the earliest images of northern New Mexico and this is from 1607, 1610. Gaspar Pérez de Villagra, who was on the Oñate Expedition. He wrote La Historia de Nuevo México and in this, he does talk about that expedition and what they found and it's a wonderful, long book. It was written in the style of the 1600s. But it does talk about the need to preserve and to record faithfully the events and what happened. And he says, if it isn't recorded, then as far as posterity knows, nobody really did anything, you know? So it's important for us to recognize all of this. And the last image that I wanted to leave you again is the photo of the reflection made by your students this last year on the Old Spanish Trail, which is a piece of Taos history, not a lot of it, but it is one piece of it that is very important and we were very pleased to have been able to partner in presenting that. And I want to thank you again for letting me speak with you and we do look forward to our collaboration on the courthouse. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Romero. We're fortunate to have the designation in our area, this National Heritage Area, and we're fortunate to have you working on utilizing those resources and preserving the cultural history of northern New Mexico.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, Commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much. I think it's such a wonderful group that you established in 2006. Is there any way the land and water film could be given to Channel 22 to put on YouTube?
The only thing that we've held on in that is that we've had, we have, we're working in partnership with David Lindblom, who works with the Northern New Mexico College. And he's still trying to get all of the sign-offs on the images, which is part of the film process. So as soon as that is completed, we would be very happy to do that. We do want to get the film presented. We talked about actually doing a community presentation first and then getting it out. But yes, that would be something that we would be very interested in doing.
And one more question, Mr. Romero. If there was any way you might be able to streamline your grant applications? I've heard people say it's rather cumbersome and if there is any way you could make it a little easier for people to apply, I would appreciate that.
Well, thank you. We've had some feedback on it. We, obviously, because we grant federal funds, we have to follow certain standards that they require. And so we created the application process to, you know, make sure that we covered all those things. We do offer, I might add, that we do offer help to anybody that wants it before they submit their application. So I personally have gotten in and reviewed the different grant applications and, but we are looking at that and we will consider if we can streamline it any further without violating what responsibility we have toward the federal government on that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Romero?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Romero, for sharing your accomplishments with us this morning. From your projects-funded list, the Duran Molino, where is that located?
It's in the, I think this way, the south. It is, David, you're...
It's off the Aseca Madre de la Rio Grande and Camino de la Loma.
Oh, okay. And is it?
Farming the largest, you know.
Is it a private?
I believe it's on private land, but it is listed on the National Register. And there was an engineering study that was done, which has helped in this. And to preserve it, it's one of the last remaining examples of that type of water-powered molinos. Part of the wall on one side was starting to collapse and so we're providing some funding just to shore that up, which was the first step that was put into the process of restoration. And then there will be other funds needed later to actually bring it back into its, you know, proper state and preserve it.
Very good. And the Morada Taos, is this the one that Mr. Yipe Rata is involved with?
David is involved in this one too.
Yeah, the Morada Taos is the one that I worked closely with the historic museums to acquire from them to try and get back to traditional use and which was done and so I'm glad about that and things have moved on. It's now a property of Our Lady of Guadalupe Parish here and Mr. Peralta and myself and others are trying to move this forward, but it's in great need of repair, inside and out. And so that's why we're looking at that too.
Thank you.
The only thing that is holding that particular project up is that because it is on the National Register, it was registered. It does have to go through federal review for Preservation, Historic Preservation Act, Section 106 review, and so we're having to do that before the actual work is done. And that's a requirement for all federal funds. The same thing would have happened, I think, with the Taos County courthouse. There would have to be that process that we have to follow and that's with the State Historic Preservation Office. And that's with the State Historic Preservation Office.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we have identified some matching funds and so we do look forward to that partnership. I'm sure you'll work with staff to make sure that we do everything that's necessary to complete the application.
Thank you again, very much.
Thank you, Sir.
If I may, folks, just one last comment from me again, on behalf of the Taos representation on the board. Thank you. And again, our thanks always to Tom and to all the people who have helped make this possible. One final note, looks like we will be able to go ahead and have the use of the old Taos County courthouse on May the 30th for this presentation. I want to stress that my presentation there on that date is not really connected at all with the National Heritage Area right now, so just want to make that clear. Although, the topics will be similar. For a long time, I've been personally involved in furthering the kind of issues and concepts that were discussed here right now. And I continue to do that through my newspaper columns, Espíritu del Norte and the Blessing Way and other activities that I do with water and so forth. So again, I will be able to announce that on Saturday, May the 30th, a major, good, comprehensive, deep presentation will be given on Taos and focusing on the water, Abeyta Settlement and other aspects of water here at the old Taos County courthouse, 2:30 PM. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
One more question from Mr. Romero. You just mentioned that you have the Morada listed as a historic site. And is this, could we perhaps work with you on, I have other properties outside in the county limits, for instance, the Canyon School has asked me to see if we could get them on the National Register of Historic Places. And there are some buildings in Punasco. And I'm wondering, would you help me at some point to facilitate how we would move forward getting those buildings registered?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. The agency that is the most significant in that process is the State Historic Preservation Office, which is part of the Department of Cultural Affairs, I believe. And we work with the State Historic Preservation Officer, who is Jeff Papas. And there is a process that has to be followed and they kind of take the lead, but they are very happy and willing to work with us, so I would be pleased to do that. And I think in your packet, there is my card, which has a number. And so if you'll just call me, I'd be happy to do that.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you again, Tomas.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Paul. Just one quick thing I was reminded from Mr. Romero's presentation. The River and Land Cleanup, which is one of the projects that him and his organization have helped support this year, is happening on June 13th, the same day as the For the Health of It event, at 10:30 afterwards, because it's been, they've been happening at the same time the past few years. So just, again, putting it out there, come out and support that cleanup effort as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that announcement. Put it on the calendar. Next is Item AB. This is a presentation regarding the 2015 Mother's Day event from Darren Cordova of DMC Broadcasting, former mayor and councilman of the town of Taos, which reminds me to recognize the Finance Director, Marietta Fambro, from the town of Taos, and the Town Manager, Rick Bellis. Thank you for joining us. Good morning, Darren.
And, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Malone, thank you for having me here. I just wanted to give you a brief presentation on the success that we had this last Mother's Day, although the weather didn't cooperate with us on Saturday. I wasn't here on Saturday. I was at my daughter's graduation from law school, so I wasn't there, so I missed the cold weather. But there were some diehard fans, but Sunday definitely made up for it. This is our 14th year and we use the measurement of when you can't see the grass in the field and that means we have a good turnout. And as you can see by the pictures, you couldn't see the grass, you know? And it's an event that we struggle every year to pull through. It's a free event to the public and without the county's support, the town of Taos support, our sponsors, the business sponsors, and we just couldn't make it happen. And this year, we were able to get the cooperation of the county, the town of Taos, and also the pueblo, as you see in the brochure. We have, for the first time in our 14-year history, we have the three entities, the Department of Tourism from the Taos Pueblo also supported the event as well, because I believe they've realized the significance of tourism that it brings. I know that the question has been asked, how do we quantify, does it put heads in beds? I know that that's what you all are interested, as is the town of Taos. It's hard to conduct a formal study, but we've done, if you will, informal studies. I did a survey myself, calling all the hotels, asking how they did during the last weekend for this last Mother's Day. And all the responses I got was it was a great turnout, anywhere from we had a full house to we were sold out. And that's what we want to hear. And when you look at the crowd in there and you zoom in, it's hard to recognize a whole lot of locals. That just shows that we get a lot of people from Colorado, from the neighboring states, from Albuquerque, Santa Fe, coming to Destin to Taos for this event. It's become a touching event because throughout the years, people have, even this last year, we had 26 people coming from Utah just to celebrate their mom's anniversary or their mom's birthday. And we've had that throughout the years. And one of the things that's touching is when we see families in memory of when their parent or their mother used to come and now, you know, she's passed away, they'll still come and they'll congregate in front of the stage and they'll save a little space where they used to have their mom. And it's really touching to see that kind of stuff. And that's how, you know, this event has really grown. And we want to just really thank the administration, the county manager, the lodgers tax board, all the staff that facilitates our staff in making sure we follow all the procedures for the application and the lodger's tax grant. So with that, I know that you have a lot of business. I don't want to take up any more time, but I stand for any questions or any concerns. Everything, I think, went without a hitch. We've been very fortunate that because of our efforts in getting enough security there, the county sheriff's department, the town of Taos Police Department, along with the pueblo, law enforcement, and New Mexico State Police assisting in presence, we've never really had any major incidents at the event. So we're proud of that and we, Macangui, we're going to continue that going. So thank you again for your support. We really appreciate it and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Darren. It really has developed into a great event and we're glad that we were able to contribute some of the lodgers tax. Be sure and bring the results of your formal survey in next year when you apply, so you can make your case.
We certainly will do that. And I do want to say also that this year marked New Mexico legend. He was saying his farewell to New Mexico. He's retiring Mr. Al Hurricane and Al Hurricane Jr. And as many of you know, they've become icons and they are the definition of what New Mexico Spanish music and our Hispanic culture, what would be New Mexico culture without the music and grassroots of Al Hurricane. And he chose Taos. Of course, we had to provide a facility that he could perform for a paid entrance. That was at Sage Bridge, which was sold out. And he was able to perform at the park for free. And one of the touching moments was when Mayor Barone went up on stage and along with his mother and proclaimed Al Hurricane and Al Hurricane Jr. Day. You know, the tears were flowing from both Al Hurricane and Al Hurricane Jr. And it just, and you can see in the crowd, too, because it was their farewell, the last time they'll ever perform at Taos. And, you know, they're on their farewell tour. You could just see the emotion running. And that was during the height there is one of the pictures you can see where Mr. Al Hurricane and Al Hurricane Jr. performed for the show. So thank you again.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Mr. Cordova, I'd like to back up your statement of what you said about people from outside. My family was there pretty much all day Sunday. And they said that it was a lot of people they didn't recognize. So that means this really did bring people to our community, which is grocery receipts, lodger tax, everything, but also just, I mean, they're going to come back because they enjoyed your event so much. Also, Saturday night, even though it was cold that day after church, we went to try to eat dinner after church, like what we did, and you couldn't get in any of the restaurants. So it did really well for our community. Thank you very much. Congratulations on your daughter's graduation.
Thank you.
And happy birthday tomorrow.
Oh, thank you. My last year in my 40s. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for being here. What did lodgers tax give you this year?
This year was $4,000.
$4,000. May I ask why you moved it from Felimón Sanchez Park? Because I would think if it were back at Felimón, it would alleviate a lot of the traffic problems that were encountered in town.
Well, I think during that time, there was a lot of political, that I prefer not to go into right now, but I think it had a lot to do with my position being mayor. K Carson Park just lends itself better as a venue. However, being mayor and since we had started at Felimón Sanchez Park before mayor, I never really pushed the issue of moving it to K Carson Park because of the conflict and so forth. So when the opportunity came to utilize it at K Carson Park, it just lends itself. I mean, you know, the people are just really, you know, one of the bad things is the parking, but I guess it's a good problem to have when that just shows the abundance of people there. But, you know, a lot of it was my political affiliation with the town that I never really pushed the issue moving it to K Carson Park. But for many years, we had it at Felimón Sanchez Park. And I tell you, you know, the field looked the same, you know?
So, Mayor, would your preference then is to keep it?
Right now, yes.
Okay.
Because of the facilities and because of the shade, the vendors really enjoy it. It just lends itself more to that type of venue, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, Mr. Chairman, it seems like there's a lot more people. It seems like it's growing, actually.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think as the years have passed and, you know, we're trying harder to get some of the more premier acts to perform, which costs us, you know, we have to support their efforts in getting a show nearby. But it definitely shows, you know, when you see that type of people here, that amount of people. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Moving on to Item 8C. This is a presentation on the Toolbox, a nonprofit community maker space serving Taos. Christina Sprong, Director, Matt Thomas, Associate Director, and Liz Neely, thank you for joining us this morning.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have a handout, if you don't mind if we give it to you. Thanks. Thank you. My name is Matt Thomas and I'm truly excited to introduce an incredibly creative project for our community called the Toolbox. The Toolbox is a makerspace for Taos and this is initiated and supported by an incredibly creative and dedicated collaboration of community leaders and organizations. The arts and the act of making in Taos have been and continue to be a valuable strength in creating community here in northern New Mexico through projects like the Paseo, which I'm the director. And I also want to take a moment to thank the Commission for our recent marketing grant that we received. And I look forward and returning later in the fall to tell you about our results of that. But through the Paseo and other art efforts, we've shown how the arts can gather us together. It can inspire us and motivate us to make things together. Christina Sprong came to the team at the Paseo with an idea of creating a makerspace for Taos. A makerspace is a creative, do-it-yourself, do-it-together space where people can gather to create, they can invent, they can learn. They have anything from 3D printers, software, electronics, as well as craft and hardware supplies and tools. There's currently hundreds of makerspaces all over the country and as well as locally in New Mexico, in Santa Fe, Las Vegas, and in Albuquerque. We've already met with the town to, actually, if we could, yeah, stop here. We've already met with the town to request the use of their old police station on Civic Plaza for Taos's first makerspace called the Toolbox. And we have our fingers crossed that we're still working to be based in central of the county in Taos. The Toolbox is a nonprofit project under the Taos Art Council. As discussion proceeds, we're reaching out to our community and we come here today requesting your support for our initiatives in creating the makerspace here in Taos. The Toolbox is a multi-use space with collaborations and partnerships made across the creative spectrum of the Taos County community. We plan to share this space for arts, youth, and educational organizations, as well as partner with community events and business startups. I'd like to introduce you to Christina Sprong, the Director of the Toolbox.
Good morning. Thank you.
Hi. We've presented to the town already, so I've done this once before. I'm a little nervous. So I'm Christina Sprong and I'm an artist and educator. I build large-scale steel sculptures out on the mesa and I exhibit them at festivals all over the world and in the country. I've lived in Taos County for 20 years and have put together an incredible team, I think, to help us start this makerspace. So Matt Thomas, Liz Neely, who works at the Harwood, Howie Rammer, Agnes Chavez, who is the STEM Arts educator in town, Eileen Peterson, who used to be the Director at Ya Chi, who's coming back, and Juniper Manley, who also works at the Harwood. Did I get everyone? Yeah, okay. The Toolbox mission is to provide a creative workspace where youth and adults with interest in technology, craft, science, communications, and art can meet, make, and collaborate. It is a space where we come together to share knowledge, incubate ideas, and where we can make and create solutions for the future. We want to open a makerspace that honors traditions from this area, obviously, and integrates and supports innovative ideas in art and technology. A makerspace will enhance the already rich Taos art community as well as help connect generations through new ways of understanding and working with technology and old-world tools. As a mom, I'm very interested and invested in creating a place for my son to be able to learn and experience the rich, multicultural traditions of this area, as well as to have access to modern, innovative tools. And it's a place where youth can cross-pollinate ideas and create their visions. Consider how this can be an opportunity for your children or grandchildren, nieces, nephews, to connect with talented artists and mentors to learn about technologies that could help solve a local problem, for example, or expose them to creative processes that they may not have had access to in school here. When you get to dissect a modern tool and actually start to understand it, it becomes a new way of thinking about your world. Having this tactile experience in deconstructing and constructing something is completely empowering. It's a way of thinking that we are losing as new technologies come and go at such a rapid pace and we stop questioning things. The Toolbox invites us to take a closer look and to understand and to own the tools of the modern world. It's also a place where new ideas are often born out of frustration with products that just don't work. Makerspaces are often the place where new innovations happen and new inventions happen and they end up in the marketplace. Open-source technologies in combination with traditional ways of working are key tools for owning the future and help our youth compete and thrive in the 21st century. The Toolbox in Taos will connect us to the worldwide maker movement. Being part of the maker movement allows us to access a network of thriving makerspaces all over the country that share the same core values, which are a community of passionate people working together to create and invent future technologies. We want to start a makerspace that offers that future to Taos County youth, children, and adults. We have reached out to the community and already received a tremendous amount of support and positive feedback, which speaks to the necessity of the makerspace here. We presented at Pechacucha a few weeks ago and increased our mailing list by a few hundred people. We participated in the Inos Garcia Little Maker Event that Twirl put on, the Invent Event, which was attended by 600 people, I think. It was a big success. We would like your support as well and as it will help us get funding needed to make this a reality. Most of the operating budget for the Toolbox will be through grants, federal and state, memberships, and crowdfunding as well. We are partnering with several renowned organizations and exciting programs to develop a variety of unique classes and workshops for youth and adults. I would like to introduce Liz Neely, our Program Advisor at the Toolbox.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, welcome.
Thanks for having us. My name's Liz Neely and I have worked on makerspace projects both here in Chicago, worked with the parachute factory in Las Vegas, and some in Albuquerque. And as a part of the program team, also working with Eileen Peterson and Agnes Chavez, who has done the STEM Arts Institute. And she's in Cuba, so she can't be here right now and exhibiting. So I wanted to talk a little bit about STEM and STEM Arts. STEM is the acronym for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And when you add A, Arts, first you get SEEM. Over the past 10 years, growth in STEM jobs was three times greater than non-STEM jobs. Similarly, the creative industries in the United States have been a major driver of economic growth, contributing $698 billion to the nation's economy. As global interdependence becomes increasingly relevant for all communities, Taos's youth need expanded opportunities to be able to compete and thrive in the new economy. The Toolbox will help prepare Taos youth with globally competitive skills in STEM and the arts. The dropout rate in New Mexico, as you probably are aware, is still The dropout rate in New Mexico, as you probably are aware, is still hovering around 50%, and Taos schools need local communities to help engage our youth. The Toolbox provides youth with workshops through innovative mentorships and focus on the development of multiple skill sets. We partner successful artists and entrepreneurs with high school students to design, build, and display solution-based arts while developing 21st century skills. These are STEM Arts Institute, so STEM Arts Institute, again, is what Agnes Chavez was a founder of, and then that's kind of collaborating with The Toolbox as well, as well as with Paseo. And these are STEM Arts Institute partners that have provided resources and mentorship opportunities for our youth, all of which have supported and will continue to support STEM arts initiatives through The Toolbox. We're also partnering with our multicultural community with organizations such as UNA Art Center at the Taos Pueblo to bring different cultures and perspectives into the collaborative space. Thank you.
Just as a final, we have spoken to a number of partners and realized that a successful maker space depends on the community it serves, and The Toolbox would like to, would also be, support local art organizations and events, including the Taos Fall Arts, the Paseo, and the Taos Arts Council. And we would love to include your logo here with these other community organizations, and we thank you very much for giving us the time this morning.
Thank you very much. It's a great concept for Taos. We're really excited to see it starting up and watch its progress, and we thank all of the efforts of your talented team that you've put together.
Thank you, yeah. We're hoping to open in the fall. Hopefully, we'll have a place to open in by the fall, by the Paseo, so.
So the...
Oh, yeah, and we're also going to try to do some pop-ups during the Solar Music Festival, right? So, yeah, mid-June, where we sort of introduce the community more to the concept of a maker space.
We'll have to get the word out, and it sounds like you're well on your way. I think it will find fertile soil in Taos.
I think so, yeah. We're very excited, actually.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much. And do you need a letter of support for us, from us, or, and also, have you secured the town hall space, the old police department?
No, we are actively working on that right now, working with the town of Taos. There's obviously lots of politics involved, but we're hoping to gain access to that space. It seems like the perfect place. And as far as, yeah, we would love a letter of support. We would love to be able to use your seal as like another partnership, like we are partnering with the town of Taos and Taos County, and just to make us, you know, look more valid when we actually apply for federal funding and state funding.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very excited about this because this is the future, especially in 3D printing. It would be really nice to see if you can get some startup businesses going here, and I know 3D printing is a little new for people to grab the concept, but you can make anything from a 3D model, including, it just, it's endless. And so the opportunity to create a 3D model, print it, manufacture it, is huge.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a huge economic possibility. So I'm hoping that you can really get the 3D printing going with the fiber optic coming online and the high-speed internet. You have the capacity now where before you couldn't do 3D printing and then get it out to the world. So maybe you could give an example of how a 3D printing application works, like maybe give us, you know, stories of people who've created arms, people have created, they use it for brain surgery.
Yeah, they use it for prosthetics.
They create a model, and surgeons use, it has huge applications in the medical industry and all kinds of industries. And this is where I thought the miners, if the miners could be trained in 3D printing and then manufacturing of parts. And I can give an example, if you need a tractor part that you can no longer find, you create a 3D model, then that 3D model is printed, and say you need a tractor part, like just something you can't get anymore. You take it to a manufacturer, they manufacture the part, and then the farmer can fix his tractor. So maybe you could just give another example of that.
Well, those are all excellent examples, and actually, we have a 3D printer already. We have been collecting tools slowly, and we're starting our Tool Drive. People have been, this community is very generous, obviously, and I think this idea is so well-supported that we will get a lot of extra tools. But Liz came to us with a 3D printer that she happens to have, and then we have access to other 3D printers, and we will be getting more. But just like you said, they can be used to print parts, which is sort of an amazing thing. And we were trying to, this idea of actually combining old-world and new-world tools, so let's say we have a loom, and we have a workshop on, you know, weaving ancient, ancient old tools using a loom, right? But let's say something's actually broken in the loom where we want to replace a part or make it slightly different, we can actually 3D print that part and use it in that application, which would be pretty neat. And nowadays, you know, they, I just saw the newest issue of Make Magazine, which is our kind of vocational magazine for this movement, and they're 3D printing cars now. I mean, you can 3D print pretty much anything. But it has, it has, it's a small, as a, as a industry goes, you don't need a lot of stuff. You just need this printer and a computer. The possibilities of this kind of technology in Taos are pretty great and significant, mainly to bring economic development into this area for our youth. And I will say Taos High School is catching up. They do have a 3D printer at the Taos High School. We will be hopefully teaching a class there this fall to sort of introduce the kids to this maker space concept, and I'm really excited about that, to sort of get into the youth here, to actually break into that community, since we're all a little older, and my kid is very young, so there's a whole gap of young people that we're trying to access.
And what I'm curious about, then you make the model, but how do we create a manufacturing plant where you can manufacture parts, like metal parts, ceramic parts, you know, to take it to the next level? And this is where I keep bringing up the miners, because if they were trained in this technology, I mean, they could, it just has huge potential.
I agree. It has huge potential, and the job of a maker space is really to create the place where, which is outside of school, where you are able to come up with crazy ideas and fail without failing, you know? It's really an educational maker space. I mean, it's like, it's a workspace for youth and adults and to share ideas and all that kind of stuff. It's not, and, you know, in that, when you have mentors, you also gain skills on how to further your idea, like how you want to bring it into the marketplace if you want to do, if you actually want to start a business. So that will be a part of the education provided there, absolutely.
What would it take to create a manufacturing plant in Taos for 3D models? I guess, you know, where you're...
Yeah, I wanted to jump, jump in there, and I think that, because one of the, I think everything is an evolution, and one of the things that a 3D printer can do to start is if you learn the modeling skills and what a 3D, especially the 3D printers that are affordable, is it really gives you a place for prototyping and for prototyping things. And then the start for that can be that it, you can send something, a prototype away, and then it comes back in metal or ceramic. But then if we, if what comes out of that is a business plan, that could be something that was a viable opportunity here, because it is very true that, I think that one of the things, if you look at, now it's a much different kind of community, but one of the things that really helped Minneapolis is that they started, they had a medical industry, and then they started making, they started having one-on-one specialized, so increasing the amount of machinist, which is a well-paying job for, in the manufacturing sector. So I think that this is a seed that could also, that could, can start to, through the mentoring of, it'd be great to get miners involved with the, so that, because you can learn up and down, right, from all ages, and then if that could be paired with, one of our partners is TEN, so as far as on the entrepreneurial end into what does that mean as far as a business plan? So I think that it can be the seed for a lot of these things, because it can be about, about the prototyping, about what can be made, and then actually being able to show. Because I think it's much easier to get funding for an entrepreneurial idea if you can start and have that idea and have something to present that actually shows, and then that can really support a business plan well, I think.
I agree. So, Mr. Chairman, are, may we go ahead and agree to put our logo on their endeavors?
We'd be proud to have our logo on there. Is it contingent upon some funding? I'm sorry, we have an attorney here who might not be as proud.
This is a, this is a non-action item, and we need to take action to do that. Just bring it back at the next meeting, and we'll do that, put it on the agenda.
Sounds good. And Steve, are we going to have a formal application process for the money that we're setting aside for agencies?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, we're actually working on that. It'll be an RFP process, and we'll ask the nonprofits to come in and do their application under that, under that process.
So stay tuned on that. Is the location of your worker space still uncertain?
Yes, it is.
And are we waiting on Mr. Bellis for that?
Yes, we are.
Well, we'll look forward to, we'll look forward to hearing, hearing the progress. I miss having Mr. Bellis to parade here. Couldn't resist a shot, but I'm sure, I'm sure it's progressing, and... Is there anything else from the Commission?
Maybe, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we can even do that with this meeting, is give our county manager the authority to write a letter of support to the town of Taos, them to grant that space to, to this group.
Well, I'm sure the discussion has sufficiently informed staff that we're behind the project, so.
Thank you. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, move for a five-minute break.
Sounds good. Before taxes, let's have a five-minute break.
Right.
Is there a motion?
Second. Oh.
I think that was a motion, and thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we have a motion to come back into session.
So most?
Second. I'll second. Call for the vote?
All right. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. AD is a presentation on property tax, gross receipts tax, and discussion of the Hold Harmless GRT, the gross receipts tax. Leandro Cordova, Finance Director, and Ms. Tasha Young from NMAC.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's Ms. Tasha Young, and I want to first thank her for attending. She is our lobbyist, and I ask her to attend more specifically on our Hold Harmless, because she's pretty good at understanding it. So first, I want to kind of go into property tax. Just want to start off with a few maps. All of these maps and all this information is available at the State Tax and Rev under government property tax, so it's nothing that isn't public record, but I just kind of wanted to point out, per capita property tax obligation by county, you can see that Taos County has about a $650 per capita broken down into residential and non-residential. The next graph, or next, it's not a graph, I love graphs, so everything's a graph to me. The next map is actually the weighted average property tax rate, and I throw this one in because it shows that as a weighted average, Taos County is one of the lowest rates, so only Katrin County is lower than us on a weighted average.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, could you explain what that means?
The weighted average is basically just taking them all, I mean, it's a very generic mathematical equation, so you're taking everything, dividing it by the total number, essentially getting your weighted average. Some things have higher weight, and some things have a lower weight, but for the most part, when you put it all together, it's, you're doing your best to compare apples to apples. But that's, and all these are just informational. I just wanted to give you guys a little background. This next...
And Leandro, the 14, that represents 14 mil, $14 per...
Per person, per capita, weighted average, so.
For how much in property value?
Yeah, exactly. Total, so it's a weighted average. I guess that's a little bit confusing, but if your residential has a higher weight and your non-residential is a lower weight, they kind of do what they got to do to make it apples to apples, and you combine the two, and that's where we stand on the state level.
And what does that minus 2.03 mean?
That is the percentage change from 11 to 12. And then let me mention that this is, the last data they got was 2012, so this is a few years back as well, but this is just kind of representing what, what data is out there, and just where it's, where it's at and where it's available for you guys, and I'd be more than happy to even give you more. There's a lot I didn't put in there. I didn't want to weigh it down with too much stuff, but the next map, I'm not even really going to go over, but there's a lot of definitions in there on property tax, how you come up with your basic net taxable value, and what a mil is. And so that's why I put that one in there, and it's hard to see up here, but it's more for your informational. And then this next, this is a graph, and this is relevant to Taos County, and so this is something that our chairman kind of asked me to do, is take a look at a very generic across the board for all the deductions that are available to individuals throughout Taos County on property tax. So we took a look at the top one with no exemptions, as an example, your market value of $150,000. So that's your home being appraised at $150,000. Your assessed value is basically that divided by three. So your assessed value is now at $50,000. With absolutely no exemptions, that takes your net taxable value to $50,000. And then your annual one-mil levy would be a $50 burden with your tax bill twice a year coming in at $25, and if you have an escrow where it comes out monthly, it's a $4.17 burden for one mil imposed with no exemptions. The next graph shows your head-of-family exemption, a $2,000 exemption across the board, and then the final graph is your head-of-family and your veterans exemption. The veterans is a $4,000 exemption across the board, and it shows you the, all the way across. I double-checked with the assessor, these are the only true exemptions that reduce net taxable value. There's also a 100% disabled veterans exemption, which is obviously 100%, and then for 65 and older, they have the ability to come in and freeze their property tax rates. So those are basically what is available in terms of exemptions and what our average taxpayer looks at on a one-mil increase. So that's pretty much what I have on property tax. I didn't get very, very detailed. I did find out that one mil generates about 1.39 million at 100% collection. We do collect about 95% average, however, they do indicate when you raise property taxes, your collection rates can go down. So just on a 94% collection rate, we would roughly bring in 1.3 million on one-mil increase.
And the head-of-family deduction, is that for primary residences, or is, how does that work? How does that work in relation to primary residents?
As I understand, that, yes, it's your primary residence, you are the head of household for that. I double-checked with the assessor, Randy helped me, you know, understand that, and basically, if you live in the house, you're the head of household. I'm not sure how that works throughout the state. Maybe he could help answer that a little bit better. I think he's here, but the head of household, as I understand it, doesn't carry from county to county, and you can't be head of household in Riri, but you can be head of household in Taos if you happen to, to, you choose what, your primary residence, and that's it, as I understand it. Thank you.
That's, would that be the same as your voter registration? Not necessar, yes?
When they apply that.
Mr. Chairman, maybe Randy ought to come forward as well, if you're going to have more questions for him. Good morning.
Morning, Randy.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
So the head of household, they have to apply in the beginning for our protest period, so from January to April, they have to come in and apply in our office for the head-of-household exemptions. They have to bring in their license and apply and show that within Taos County, they're using this as their primary residence with their mailing address and their license and voter registration. And that's how we determine if they qualify for that head-of-family, and we have to check to see if they own property in a different county, and they're not claiming it there as well, because we report these numbers to state property tax, and then they ensure us that they are only claiming it within our county.
So really, that's all I really prepared for property tax specific. I mean, that one is relatively simple when it comes to the assessed value, very complicated when it comes to yield control. So I'm not even going to go there today. I don't know, I can't explain it, maybe Randy can, but, so that's what I prepared for today, just to give you an overall general view of property tax and what one mil does to the taxpayer and what it would generate for us as a taxing entity.
Mr. Chairman, Randy, what is the average market value? Mr. Chairman, Randy, what is the average market value of a home in Taos County?
Average market value, that's going to be dependent on the district. So like, within the town of Taos, it's going to range between 300,000 and 500,000.
Okay, and then the outer areas?
Outer areas, that's going to be dependent, like with the ski valley, you're going to have a higher market value than you would here. Like, say, in one out in Ranchitos, it would be between 100 to 200, and with the ski valley, you're going to look at the higher, between 700 to 800.
How much of the market value is actually second homes to people that possibly live elsewhere, but they have second homes in Taos County? How many of these are second homes that you are aware of?
I'm not too sure, but I can get you those numbers.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and is it true that we have, is this the 14 mil? Is that what, in that previous graph where it says 14.199, is that the mils that were?
Previous graph? I'm sorry.
On the weighted property tax rates? Is that a mil? Are we talking?
Yeah, one mil is per 1,000.
But in this overall map, are we at 14 mils in the county? Is that?
No. Residential is at 11 mil? Is that 10?
No, non-resident. So your residential, I believe, is at 5.8, and your non-res is at 10. And that's across countywide.
Is it true that even though we have the lowest mil rates, we still have higher property valuations? And so it offsets, even, I mean, so the figures are kind of skewed?
Right. These mils are determined by DFA. So when we report our actual assessed value to DFA, they determine the mil rates at that point.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Fambro.
Randy, what is that term and concept that DFA uses to where you're still going to end up with the same amount of money regardless? If you lower the property tax rate, it's going to be, I mean, because you can't have county government, and you can't have schools fail. So what is that concept?
That's going to be your yield control, and that is determined each year based on the prior year's taxes to ensure what your baseline is going to be.
Thank you. And so the minus 2%, that's a result of yield control? In other words, the property values in the county went up, and so the actual rate to individuals went down by 2% because you get a fixed amount at the end.
Correct.
But if you raise the mil, then you increase the amount that you get. But without an actual tax increase, then the amount that the county is authorized to collect stays the same. And so if there's a development like we're expecting in the Taos Ski Valley, where they're building big hotel and various condominiums and whatnot, that's going to increase the total value of property in Taos County, but our cut stays the same, so individuals pay a little bit less, incrementally less. Is that right? That's sort of how yield control works on a very general basis. Tasha, could you help us out here?
Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, if I could just add kind of as a transitional statement, property tax, which is more difficult to change than gross receipts tax, because it's in the Constitution, is the largest source of revenue for all counties in New Mexico, with a couple of exceptions. And it's a more stable source of revenue than gross receipts taxes, as Leandro, as your director is just about to illustrate. But in a couple of counties, San Juan County is one, I think Burn Hill County is another, gross receipts tax brings in more revenue than property tax. In San Juan County, it's because the surrounding counties and states, residents all come in to shop on the weekend, and a number of the places in which they shop are actually in the county and not in the city. And so the gross receipts tax, over time, has become much more significant there than it is in most of the other counties. I don't know what the percentage is in Taos County, and I should have told you this morning, didn't plan to ask you this, of what percent of your revenue is property tax and what percent is gross receipts tax. But that's a picture that's changing, and I think it's one of the reasons why we're going to be talking about gross receipts tax today.
And to answer that, it's small. We've kind of showed you guys that we don't, for general fund purposes, don't use a lot of GRT to fund our general fund. It is primarily property tax. And so.
It's like 70% or something?
Right now, we only put in one increment. We are about to add another one into there.
But the total, our total receipts from taxes, from property taxes, is what percentage of the total?
Almost 90%. I wouldn't say it's 89%. 89% of our general fund budget is property tax.
And that's unusual, then. That would be an outlier for other counties, right?
The reason why it's so high for us primarily is that most of our GRT goes straight for debt service on this beautiful building. And so, you know, we enacted a lot of increments, and we'll get into that now as we go into GRT, if you guys are ready to move on to GRT, but.
Just, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, could you please explain again this 14.19, what that means? I'm still having.
I'll do my best. I'll go ahead and read the footnote for you and see if that helps you. It's expressed in mils, $1 per 1,000 in net taxable value, and the total obligations divided by the total net taxable value or rate in each jurisdiction, weighted by net taxable value in the jurisdiction. So that's basically how they come up with those numbers and what they, how they derived them.
But it does, so it would mean $14 per thousand in property taxes. So, you know, if the value of your property is 100,000, then you would be paying $140 per year. Is that right?
Essentially.
That's basically what it represents. But you had said earlier that the residential is only five mil. Why is it only five mil if the blended total is 14?
That I cannot answer. I can look into.
Your non-residential will pick up the other part of that 14. So at that year for 2012, it was around 9.7. I'm not too sure.
So it's cumulative?
It's that 14 is non-residential and residential together.
It's adding the two, not averaging the two.
And on the other map, you can kind of see the breakdown of res versus non-res.
Where's that one?
And if we go all the way back, you'll see the blue is non-res, or the greenish-blue, there's about 300 in there, and then the yellow is residential. So we do have a larger, a slightly larger residential versus non-residential breakdown.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, could someone tell us where Taos County fits in our poverty levels compared to other counties?
That's per capita. Oh, no, that's obligation.
A ranking of poverty levels. Where does?
I don't have that information. I wasn't expected, I didn't expect me to. I'll pull that for you if I can, and I'll get that to you at another time.
Okay, thank you.
I believe we're two, right? Mora Bean first?
We're up there. We certainly are up there. I don't know the exact.
That's measured by per capita income.
Business and economic research is going to have those numbers for you, the poverty level, I'm real sure.
Mm-hmm.
And so, moving on then to GRT, and this is, I think, what the big discussion really is going to be about. The first graph that I put in there is, was provided to us by Ms. Young. This graph, or this spreadsheet, basically breaks down all of the county's local option increments. And it also helps you see how many counties have enacted them. And so you can get a good idea where we are amongst the rest of the state. The very first page, these are our county gross receipts taxes that are just general. The first 1/8 is pledged to some debt, and the rest goes into our general fund. The second 1/8 is for indigent purposes. Our third 1/8 just got repurposed for general fund. Our fourth 1/16, the quarter of that goes to the road, and the rest goes to our general fund. And then now we have available to us a new 1/12 for general fund purposes that we have not yet enacted. Right now, only Colfax and San Miguel have enacted that. The county infrastructure gross receipts tax, we have enacted both of those increments. If you scroll through the next, the county capital outlay gross receipts tax, we have enacted those as well. You'll see our name on there as the sixth county. We did all four of those increments. That was for debt. So was the previous one. Those are for debt. Countywide, county area emergency, we have not done that yet. We have those available to us. The county educational gross receipts tax, Taos is the only one that does that, one-half increment, 50 cents on the dollar. And then we haven't done the healthcare gross receipts. Actually, we do, and that's directly intercepted for Medicaid fund. And so we have enacted that, and it goes right out. We haven't done special county hospital. We haven't done county hospital emergency. And the local hospital gross receipts tax, we had at one time, and we repurposed it for education. So I don't know if that is available to us anymore. We have enacted the county correctional facilities gross receipts tax, which is pledged to debt, and then the excess goes into our corrections budget. County environmental services GRT we have enacted, and that goes to our solid waste, which is also pledged for equipment and debt. County fire protection services tax, that's our fire excise, which is only county area. It's not countywide, so it only affects outskirts areas of the county, and we have enacted that. And the county regional transit gross receipts tax, we, along with our partners, have enacted that. That's our blue bus tax, which we do not keep. It's another quarter tax that goes out. And then the rest of these are available to us. Quality of life, regional spaceport, well, that one's not available to us. That's been only enacted by the two counties down south. And the big one that we're going to talk about today is the county hold harmless gross receipts tax. That hold harmless is broken down into three 1/8s. And right now, you can see that, for the most part, actually TRD only looks at it from 2/8s and 3/8s.
Nobody's done 1/8.
Nobody's only done 1/8. The counties that have enacted the 2/8s are Colfax, Curry, Otero, and San Juan. And then the 3/8s have been enacted by Sibula, Grant, Harding, Sierra, and Valencia. And I believe this, does this have everything that's going to be coming on July 1 also?
We have almost as many counties like you that have authorized that, either two or three 1/8s. I think we're going to have 17 counties that have enacted this tax. And let me just back up a little bit and explain the color.
The municipal league asked me at one point to explain which ones of these require a referendum. So the turquoise ones, and I, beginning with the general county taxes, do not require a referendum, and the green one has voter petition, which means that you can authorize it. But if the voters come up with enough petition signatures, they can put it on the ballot for a voter referendum. I don't think that's ever happened, but it's available to the voters, and it made the legislature a little more comfortable in authorizing that tax. And then all of the yellow ones require a referendum by the voters. That's really all the color is telling you. And if this looks complicated to you, it's because it is. I always describe it as complicated and convoluted, and we've got a lot of taxes on here that nobody is using at all, usually because they are so very narrowly described or they're earmarked. And that makes it more difficult for the counties to use them.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Tasha, the quality of life GRT?
No one has authorized that.
Can elaborate a little bit more on that? What does it?
Except for the village of Cuba. I keep driving through there and trying to figure out what they did with the quality.
So how, where can you apply it? Where do you apply that GRT? What are the projects that can be cultural?
Under quality of life?
Cultural programs, promote and expand cultural programs.
Yeah, I think I described it here, didn't I? And I've got the statute.
Would it be something?
Promote and expand cultural programs, and a couple of.
Like an old courthouse or something like that?
You know, I can read the specific, but I would guess it's what you say is cultural, because I did read the statutory language in writing this chart, and I don't think it's more specific than that. But we did bring the statutes. Otero County was describing some projects recently, but that does go to a referendum.
Yeah.
So if there's no more questions on that, and the colors, and all of the complications of it, and that's just for the counties. I mean, that's not even the municipalities. They have a whole different schedule that they're allowed to go after in different increments that are out there for municipalities. So the next thing I'm going to show you is the map of the gross receipts rates for the rest of the state, including us. This is 2015, and you can see, well, Taos County is the highest GRT in the state. We are the only county above 7%. The next map I show you will be 2014, and the reason I did the two is so that you can see that there has certainly been a trend of tax increases among counties. In this map, you see that everything's gray around us. You go to the next map, you notice Colfax and Harding were blue. Those two have now raised their taxes above the 5.5 and have gotten into the 5.5 to the 6, the gray area. And you can see a lot of southern counties have also raised their taxes. So you go back up to 2015, and there's also a little map on the right that shows City of Santa Fe, Los Alamos area, and that's basically the highest rates in the state right now. The City of Espanola has enacted their hold harmless, all three increments, and they're at 8.813 or something along those lines, they're over 8.8%, which is the highest tax rate in the state right now for a municipality.
What's, how high can you go?
There really, there's not really, I think we're capped about 10%, but there's a few that are not allowed to us anymore, because like, the hospital cannot be reenacted without legislation. I want to say that we're capped about almost 10%, just under 10% at the county. But that doesn't mean that we can't push up the cities. And that's what I'm going to show you in a little bit, what a tax rate by the county can do to the municipalities within the county.
What is our tax rate now as a county?
We're at 7.1.
2.5.
Yeah, 7.125.
And what's the next highest of any other county?
McKinley County, and they are under the seven. Let me, well, actually, Luna, they have, Luna passed their hold harmless, so Luna County went up to 6.875. As of July 1, they'll be at 6.875. So the second highest county is Luna County at that, 6.875.
And how did we get our very own one-half cent?
Legislation. Special legislation by our local representative and senators to create capital funds for our schools. And that was a, they repurposed the hospital tax when all those bonds were paid off, and they put that 50 cents on every dollar towards the schools. That sun sets in 2023, and at that time, another decision can be made. It goes out to the voters again.
And the Commission petitioned for that, right? That was about, what, eight years ago?
Yes, I believe so. I believe about 2002, around then is when it became available. The first time, they sold bonds, they went through the whole process, those expired, and then they reissued just two years ago.
Originally, they sold bonds for the hospital off of that half cent?
Mm-hmm, yes. They did a couple sets of bonds. That originated in 96, I believe, for the hospital originally.
That wasn't under the Hospital Funding Act? You know, there's a special ordinance that allows you to pass taxes for hospital funding, a separate statute. You're not familiar with that?
I'm not positive either. I'll look into it. I think it may have had its basis on that, but it went and got its own legislation, and it was passed at the legislative level.
I think like, half of the counties have passed a hospital, a tax under the Hospital Funding Act. But Tasha, you're not aware of that?
I'm not going to be able to totally, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, answer that, but under the old sole community provider, are you talking about VAT funding? No. Okay, you're all obligated to support the county supportive Medicaid fund, and you all do that. And then the indigent fund, you've done in various ways. A lot of these little increments in here are hospital funding, and they're very specific and earmarked, and I'm not knowledgeable about the differences between all of those. Counties were obligated by the legislature last year in 2014 to come up with a 12th or the equivalent of the new 12th to support the state safety net care pool, which does go to qualifying hospitals. But, and as Mr. Cordova's going to tell you in a minute, only two counties have actually enacted the new 12th to do that. All the others have found the equivalent from other revenue sources. And I just want to say that I think part of what's happening here and why you see that change in the picture is that the state of New Mexico chose, the legislature chose, and the governor, over the last two years, not to increase state taxes, but gave counties new, broad taxing authority without referendum, and essentially said to the local government, but you can. And because of issues that you know very, very well, having to do with funding for jails, funding for roads, and funding for other critical paying-for buildings, the counties have found it necessary to enact new taxes to raise taxes. That's why you see the difference between those two maps and that increase between 2000 and 2000. That's why you see the difference between those two maps and that increase between 2014 and 15 to enact more taxes at the local level in order to support those critical needs at the local level.
And while Ms. Young's up here, I'm going to actually let her talk some more about the hold harmless, which is a new three increments that were given to us a few years ago. I've been trying to make as much sense of it as possible. And the more I talked to her, the more I realized there wasn't a lot of sense to it perhaps. And it may have been a little bit rushed. And therefore, I think a lot of communities are also trying to make sense of it. And I think she could give a lot more insight on that.
In March of 2013, at the very end of the legislative session, I think it's House Bill 641, which was a, when it, when it came out of Senate Finance the night before the end of the legislative session, session ends at noon on a Saturday, and this was Friday night. The bill is introduced on the Senate floor, was called, Senator Neville from San Juan County said, there's something in here for everyone to hate. And I thought, that's not the problem. There's something there in there for everybody to love. And it was a tax incentive package that had critical changes to six different kinds of taxes and and was a, an economic development for the package that everybody loved. Unfortunately for local government, what also did was to phase out the state's hold harmless payments to cities and counties to make up for the fact that the food grocery receipts tax was taken off food and medicine in 2004. And and the state essentially said, this is costing us way too much, much more than we ever, ever dreamed of in 2004. It's upwards of $140 million and it's growing, these payments to cities and counties. We can't afford it anymore. So we're doing all of these economic development tax incentives. At the same time, we are going to phase out the hold harmless payments beginning July 1 of 2015 over, I believe it was a 15-year period. And then, and because this was done at night at the end of the session, there was no discussion with city and county government. And and so to give a little back to local government, the legislature also said, but cities and counties, we are giving you three new eights of general purpose grocery receipts taxes. Called the hold harmless grocery receipts tax to use countywide, in this case of the counties, which means we're also taxing the cities, not just the unincorporated area. And you don't have to go to the voters. And in the first year that that tax was available to the counties, I think only Otero County enacted it and a small number of cities. The second year, the legislature then added a new 12th to the county, saying, here's another new tax that you can enact countywide, no referendum. It's a general purpose, it's not earmarked. And 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 only two counties have done that. But also last year, something like 12 counties enacted either two eights or three eights of the hold harmless tax. And and as I said, I think that number, we think that number is going to be doubled. As soon as we see the new chart, we'll know that by July 1. And I think, I think I've been listening to a lot of counties. I think what what local government was saying, especially the counties were saying were to the legislature, in the first year, at the end of the first year, in the 2014 legislative session, everybody thought there was going to be a fix to the hold harmless legislation. And and the major reason there was no fix was because McKinley County, which has the highest, they would argue, the highest poverty rate, which is, does not want to raise grocery receipts taxes because of economic development reasons, asked for a special carve out of the legislation that was going to be a fix for hold harmless. And and there wasn't a deal. They weren't able to make a deal with McKinley County. So nothing passed, nothing changes. I think in a lot of counties, they looked at it, for the second year, they got more new taxing authority. And they basically said, all right, there's no fix. It doesn't look like there's going to be a fix. We're going to use the new authority that's been given to us to pay for our jails, to pay for our roads, to pay for law enforcement, everything else that counties need. So I think that's, that's what's going on with with the hold harmless tax. And then the other thing that I want to say that I think is significant is that I've done a spreadsheet. Do they have that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's really my, my changes to, actually, mine is blue and orange. And I did it originally with colored pencils before I put it on Excel. But what I was trying to show was how complicated county grocery receipts taxes are, much more than the cities. How most increments that the legislature has given to the counties are not used, and many of them are unusable. But that counties are beginning to use the new hold harmless taxes, even though a few of them have done the one 12th. And something interesting that occurred to me when I did this chart was that the general purpose taxes are all on the left of the chart. And they're the ones that are described first in the the little blue, green, and yellow chart that I gave to you. They can pretty much be used for anything unless the county chooses to to purpose them very specifically. And and there was the the earmarking for the indigent fund. The hold harmless increments, when Tax and Rev had to amend the chart, they put all the way over on the right. And I thought, why are they there? They're general purpose increments. I went back and read the statute. There is no language specifying what the hold harmless increments can be used for. The state of New Mexico, the legislature, many folks view those as earmarked increments, even there is no language saying that. And what they would say, and they've said to me, is counties and cities, you're only supposed to enact those taxes in order to make yourselves whole for what you're using through the hold harmless phase out. And if that's not happening, then you don't need those new taxes. You're getting, these are their words, not mine, a windfall. And and they're not pleased that as many counties have have seen fit to enact those new taxes, the new hold harmless taxes. So there's just, and I just say to them, we have a philosophical disagreement. I don't think that's, those are earmarked taxes. And and I've spoken to many folks who are much more expert than I. I can't find any language that says, here's, you can only use it for this. You can only use it for the spaceport. You can only use it for Taos County schools. You can only use it for something else, for the jail. Those are general purpose increments. And the only reason that there's not a little cell there for one eighth is because no county has enacted just one eighth, and there isn't very much room left on this chart as a practical matter.
If if you pass the hold harmless tax, does that affect the phase out payments in any way?
Yes, 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 I believe it does. I believe that language that was passed in House Bill 641, there is no phase out for cities under 10,000, counties under 48,000. But if you enacted the new tax, then you did trigger.
Then you trigger it. And so there's a net, there's a lower net that you receive by enacting that hold harmless tax. And we need to know what that number is.
This one, one other thing I wanted to say, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. And that is that I have heard House Bill 641 described as, although I think it was never the intention, legislation that that creates conflict between the state and local government, between hospitals and the state, but that's really a slightly different argument. And between cities and counties, because the counties were given countywide taxing authority. And the cities were given taxing authority. So it's not just a matter of counties enacting up to three one eights. The cities can also do that. And and then the, so that the cumulative effect is six eights, it's three quarters, it's a healthy amount of tax.
Yes, it is. I know it's general purposes.
Unhealthy.
Yeah, maybe. I know that it's general purposes, but if you used it to leverage the sale of bonds, would then that mean that you could only use it for capital projects once you sold bonds?
Yes, because the bonds have that provision of capital. We can't use bonds for reoccurring operating costs or anything along those lines. So yes, essentially, you are kind of, we would probably want to adopt it as a general purpose. But once you pledge it, it is pledged, and that's all it's going to be able to be used for until that pledge has been paid off and matured.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, but only the amount pledged. I mean, so if we brought in a one eighth and it brought in 800,000, and we only pledged 400,000 of that, 400,000 of that could still be used however the commission chooses to do it.
Right, any amount you pledge towards bonds has to be used towards capital projects, not not salaries and whatnot.
Mr. Chairman, are we talking about the hold harmless increasing, reinstituting the taxes on food and medicine or not? No, okay.
There was a proposal by the municipal league in this last legislative session, 2013, to put the tax back on food. And I think there might have been a bill drafted, but that legislation never went anywhere. And I don't think the cities thought that was going to happen, but they thought it was an important discussion to have. I wanted to add that Burnalee County enacting their new hold harmless one eights has clearly indicated that one of those is for mental health programs. And and they based doing that earmarking partly on a vote that was on the ballot for everybody in McKinley County, which is where I live, saying, do you support? It was like a straw vote. There was a lot of controversy about it. Would you support these programs? And so they sort of said, we got authority from the voters, we got a message from them. And so they have very specifically earmarked their increments, but they chose to do that. It's not in the statute.
So if we can go back to the presentation. Well, I wanted to show you the enactment table for Taos County. It's real small, it's hard to see, but you have it in your packets. And what it basically does is break down when our increments were enacted. And then, as you'll see, underneath Taos County, we have the biggest list of subentities. We have El Prado Water and Sand, we have El Valle de los Ranchos, we have Quest Airport and Taos Airport. All those fall under our taxable. And so I just put that in there kind of as a reference. The next page kind of gets to somewhat of the answer that the chairman, the question the chairman just asked is, well, what do we bring in in hold harmless? And so this is our total GRT disbursements for the year fiscal year 14. And you can't really see, but there's two small numbers down there. If you go to food distribution and medical distribution, that is what is essentially replaced. And that's what hold harmless comes in for us. We brought in 717,000 in food distributions and about 119.9, almost 120, in medical for a total of about 837,000 in hold harmless. If we enact one eighth, we generate about 815,000. And we start losing 7% a year of this money. And this is why I'm glad our partners from the town are here and village and the other entities in the room, because now's the time to kind of mention that we don't rely on the hold harmless as much as a municipality does. So as an example, the town of Taos probably generated in fiscal year 14 about 1.4 million in those hold harmless. And if I'm wrong, maybe it could correct me. But they do probably get close to double what we get in hold harmless because most of your food and medical establishments are within the town of Taos. Village de Quesada is probably, I mean, they may not get as much as us, but I think total for their overall budget, I'm sure it's important to them. Same thing with Ski Valley and Red River. They may not get as much medical and, but it's probably pretty important to their budget. And overall, GRT is more important to municipalities than it is to the counties. So that being said, and I just really wanted everyone to understand that. Because we have the ability to do the hold harmless and the municipalities also have that ability. Ms. Young just mentioned it. We could push tax rates if we weren't communicating and working together really high. And the last thing I have in the presentation is just an overall tax rates for all of the state, all the counties, municipalities, so that you guys can see that. But then I'm going to ask Brent to pull up what, I took this chart and I just extracted Taos. And I took what we have and I kind of took a look at all our municipalities. And I put in their tax rates. So if you can see at the top, our Taos County current rate, 7.125. If we increased it by .0833, which is the one 12th, and I kind of highlighted it in yellow. And then, as you get to the back, the hold harmesses are on the third, third page, so those are also highlighted. But for this first example, if we increase our Taos County rate by .0833, we will increase Quesada's rate, Town of Taos, and the Ski Valley. And you can see how that goes proportionally for all of them. We pushed Ski Valley all the way up to 8.7708. If Taos County were theoretically to raise all three increments of the hold harmless, you can see the impact on our municipalities. We pushed Ski Valley over 9%. They would be the highest municipality in the state on a, on a GRT basis. I was also asked to look at our regional partners in Southern Colorado. I didn't provide much information because I, it makes us look even worse. I mean, the highest I could find was in Alamosa. It's a very convoluted and tiered system, but it looks like it's about four and a half percent on something purchased in Alamosa GRT. They have higher lodging and things like that. And if I'm wrong, you could correct me. But as I was looking through their tax, that's what I kind of noticed and.
If you could check Pueblo and Colorado Springs, you're going to find they're over 10%.
Yes, and even Walzenburg is higher than Alamosa. So I did look at Walzenburg, I did look at even Trinidad. They were higher than Alamosa, but they're still lower than us. It wasn't until you get to Pueblo that they are on our level. But also, the interesting thing I found about Colorado is they do a comprehensive tax study at the state level every five to seven years. And so they're raising their taxes or they're adjusting taxes based on a study that was provided to them from the state. We don't get that luxury. We don't seem to have that kind of support at this time. And we always, at the local level, have to kind of do our own analysis and and do what we have to do to figure out where we're at, but.
Mr. Chairman, didn't, didn't you say that the hold harmless on the state level was going to sunset July 15, July 2015?
The sunset was, the sunset was originally in a bill passed in 2014 that would have sunsetted the county's obligation to support the state safety net care pool. And and that's why that 12th was originally created, was to give counties an extra tax option to support that. So it's separate from this, it is connected. The governor vetoed the sunset, which means that the county's obligation to pay for the state safety net care pool, the equivalent of a 12th, goes on forever. And and that's of great concern to the Association of Counties. We had legislation that would have put in a new sunset as of December 31, 2018. That legislation did not pass this year. So that's an ongoing concern for us. We still have a little time to fix that.
I guess what I'm asking is the hold harmless that we're getting, the numbers you showed us, that will continue?
It's, that just, that continues. It's scheduled to be phased out.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes, beginning July 1 of this year, and I believe it's a 15-year phase out. It phases out at the rate of six, Mr. Manager, you probably know the six or seven percent per year for that 15-year period.
Correct.
Yeah.
But our county would not be phased out because we're a smaller county unless we enact the tax. Once we enact the tax, then at that point, we would go through the phase out period.
I don't have the population numbers in my head.
We're at 33,000.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
It won't affect us unless we enact the tax.
You're a small. So your recommendation is we don't enact the tax, obviously, if we're getting it from the state. I mean.
I mean, if you are asking my recommendation, I mean, I, I think, the more I looked at this, you know, the task always leads to research and research leads to more questions sometimes. But we're partners. And Ms. Young mentioned that hold harmless actually did a lot of pitting counties versus cities. And it did a lot of damage, probably, where we should have been collaborating and trying to come together. And that's why I'm glad that we have partners in the room that we can talk about this together. The one 12th that keeps coming up is only available to the counties. So if you really wanted my recommendation, and if the Board of County Commission is set on raising a GRT tax, I would recommend it be the one 12th, which provides the minimal impact on all the other municipalities and leaves the hold harmless available to the municipalities, should they choose to pursue that path. But that's simply my recommendation. I'm not making any, I'm not trying to ask the board to make a decision. Today, this is all presentation, and I just wanted to put out there what the effects are, what we're available, what's available to the county and what's not available to the towns and what's available to all of us.
The one 12th of hold harmless or some other?
The one 12th is actually, it's a general purpose.
Okay.
We could use it for anything. And it was originally meant to offset our obligation to the safety net care pool, which is the one 12th that goes to the state for.
We have not enacted that.
We have not enacted that as of yet. Only two counties have enacted that.
What I hear you saying is do not enact any hold harmless GRT tax. But if you were to recommend it would be the one 12th, a new, this is new. We have, we don't have it on the books.
Don't have it. Then that is what I would say is to look at the overall comprehensive, what we're doing. And if we wanted to really pursue the hold harmless, I would ask that we invite all the municipalities to come in and discuss that with us before we make a decision that's going to affect all of them. And that's all I'm asking.
So if we were to, say, raise some other taxes that we don't, we haven't raised in the GRT, would that also increase all the municipalities' rates on some of these other taxes?
If you look at my chart, it indicates which are, if they're countywide taxes, yes. And I think on my little blue, yellow, and green chart, I say up at the top, all of these are countywide unless I've indicated otherwise.
It's not in the packet, Mr. Archuleta. At some point, could I be provided copies of that? Because I don't have it in my packet.
I just wanted to explain the 12th to you really quickly. The hospitals wanted an eighth from the counties. And and the county's counterproposal was, how about a 16th? How about half of that? And we polled the counties and said, what can you live with? And 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 we put a 12th in there too, because it was in between the two. And and most of the counties said, we can live with a 12th. And Tax and Rev didn't have any 12th increments. That's the kind of thing that really gives them headaches, I think, you know? How do you even compute a 12th? Because they'd always been dealing in 16ths, eighths, quarters, and halves. And and so that was a brand new increment. was a brand-new increment. But it was interesting to me that they put it all the way over on the left of the chart with the general-purpose increments. I don't think it's earmarked, and...
I don't either. We didn't really have the guidance from Tax and Rev as of yet, other than the model ordinance, and the model ordinance looks just the same as any of our general-purpose ordinances. This is the only one also that is allowed to be enacted by the Board of County Commissioner without a vote, besides the hold harmless. So the hold harmless and the 1/12th can be acted on by the Board of County Commission without a vote from the voters. Anything else that is available to us would have to go to the voters. And then a quick example for you, Commissioner O'Donnell, on county area versus county-wide. Our fire excise is county area, it only is collected outside of the municipalities. County-wide is everybody. So if it's a county-wide tax, like the hold harmless or this 1/12 safety net, it does affect everyone.
The county-wide gets about 800,000 a year, what does the one that excludes the municipality get?
The 1/12th generates between 580 and 600,000.
Right, right, that'd be the 1/12th. But if you, if there was a 1/8th available that was not county-wide and excluded the municipalities?
County-only.
Oh, that would be kind of like our fire excise, which I think brought in almost 500,000 this year.
About the same as a 1/12th county-wide, right? So the arithmetic on the hold harmless is, I think, you know, 1/8th gets us 800,000, but then that would initiate the 7% reduction, and we get about 850, so that's like 60,000 would come off of the 800. So I think that's how it would work, right? Instead of getting 800, you'd get about 750, because that would institute the 7% reduction. Is that about right?
And actually, it's, in the beginning, you're almost double, and that's why they say it's a windfall for counties, because in the beginning, you're still getting your 830 in hold harmless, and you're going to get this new revenue, but you start phasing the 830. So about over 15 years, you meet in the middle, and you're flush.
But the net, you're still getting a little bit less from your payment from the state, and so the net to the county by passing a 1/8th hold harmless is about 50,000 or 60,000 less than, 50,000 or 60,000 less, because your payments from the state are reduced by that much at the same time.
Yes, every year for the next 15 years.
Right. But my only question then is, if you pass a quarter, is it 14% or is it still the 7% base?
It's still the 7% base, and that's why you haven't seen a county do only one.
That's why people pass a quarter. It makes more sense to pass...
Just a couple of things I wanted to add, because I've been watching this for a long time. In 2004, when the hold harmless was taken, the payments were, I'm sorry, when the tax was taken off food and medicine, we wanted to enact a new county tax, and it was going to be a new 1/8th general purpose, and the city said, hold it, that's way too much tax for us as well. And we compromised on a 16th. That's why there is that general purpose 16th, and by the way, that was Senator Cesar Neros and Representative Gonzalez carried that legislation for us. But it was the Municipal League and the Association of Counties saying, what can we collectively do that the cities and counties can agree on? And we agreed on a 16th. There's an increment in county gross receipts tax called the emergency medical and communications tax, I don't know if you have that one or not, but that was originally a county-wide tax. But Sandoval County wanted to enact that one, and they knew they couldn't pass it in the city of Rio Rancho. And so they amended the statute to say that, I think this is the only one, you can enact that tax either county-wide or only in the unincorporated area. And they enacted in the unincorporated area. And so what I'm trying to say is, it's so good that you're talking about this in partnership with the cities, because I think that's the only way that a good decision is made. And I know of one, and I'm not sure where it was, which is great, and I can't mention it, but in one county where the city went ahead and enacted the tax, the county was thinking about it, and the county said, no, we're not going to do it, because we don't want to have those stacked increments. So I think partnership is critical here. And then I just wanted to apologize, I'm going to have lunch with Representative Gonzalez, I'm going to have to leave in a few minutes, but it was so great for me to sit and listen to Taos County culture and history and events for a couple of hours before you did this. I really benefited from that, and I think your finance director is a very unusual and special person, and I appreciate the invitation.
I agree with unusual.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, before you leave, Ms. Young, could you give us your opinion if we were to ask the state legislature to float a statewide bond, you know, for the hospital?
I am totally ignorant on bond issues.
Okay.
But, you know, I can always find, I know who knows. And what you always say to the legislature, when they ask you a question, you say, I don't know the answer to that, but I'll have it for you by tomorrow, probably take me a little bit longer, but, and I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, that I have your hospital question correctly either, so any questions that I don't answer, and the manager, I'm sure, can help me do that, that he can't answer, I will find answers to.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think what we've seen over the last three years with this administration is that the state is not going to pass taxes on taxpayers. They're going to let the local jurisdictions, and by them giving us the options of 1/12s and all of these things, is a prime example of how they're doing that. The governor has been very determined to say she's not going to pass a tax, and I think that's possibly why the whole capital outlay was held up this year, because what the Senate was asking for was pass a tax on the gas in order to do the bonds for the capital outlay, and the governor, at her level, is not going to pass a tax at the state level. So I think that, to the manager's affiliate, and to the managers, is a very clear indication that that burden's going to come back on the local government.
Yeah, I know nothing about bonding, but I totally agree with that political judgment from the manager. He was also somebody I've known for a long time, and for whom I have much respect.
Yeah, you can't sell a bond unless you have some tax revenues to back it up, so it's probably not going to happen, but...
No, I don't think so, and my assessment of why there's been no special session is certainly the same as yours. It's a question of how you fund gas, how you fund roads. Do you borrow and spend, or do you tax and spend? Those are the two opposing mantras.
Well, thank you again, Ms. Young, for showing up at our meeting and helping us understand these questions, we really appreciate it.
I'm trying to understand it as well, so it's helpful.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Young is a great asset to the Association of Counties, to us, to everyone she serves, and I'm very grateful she came. I invited her last minute Friday, and apparently we're one of those stops that she kind of can make her change plans for. She said Taos is a great place to visit, so I'm glad that we're in Taos, so she came to join me.
She's in trouble now that we know that.
And I stand for any more questions, or any other thoughts, or more research you need.
Mr. Chairman, I think you also have to throw into the mix the fact that we have some mutual domestics, water and sanitation districts. I believe El Prado has not enacted a further GRT tax, but El Valle de los Rancho's could possibly consider that. So in this mix of conversation, you also have to involve the mutual domestics.
And I agree completely that, you know, before we make a consideration to raise a tax, we absolutely need to talk to the town, see what their plans are, talk to the water and sanitation districts.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, if there's any further research you need of me, I will go do my best to pass the statute on hold harmless, I'll email that to you guys. All these enactment tables and Tax and Rev, I'll get that to you as well. And these that I did not include in the packet, I will send to you as well. And any other research, just let me know, and I'll do my best to try and to get that for you.
Thank you, Landre. Right on time for lunch.
Mr. Chairman, I've had Mr. Chavez waiting here with San Stephen Road since 9:30 this morning, and we go to lunch, I think it's about a five-to-10-minute presentation, maybe less.
Mr. Chairman, I have before that presentations...
I was saying, so I think we could get that done probably before we go.
All right, let's take care of the new business under item nine, A and B, both having to do with petitions for the adoption of roads. First one is A, and that is a petition for the adoption of a portion of Pacheco Road in Yano San Juan. Nick Beeson. Did I get that right, Mr.?
Perfectly, thank you. Oh, I have some hard copy. Good morning, and thank you for having me on the agenda. This is my third run at petitioning for the adoption of the last two tenths of a mile of Pacheco Road in Yano San Juan. My wife and I are permanent residents of Yano, and before we built our home there, we spent about $25,000, fresh materials, conduits, et cetera, et cetera, to bring the road up to snuff, because up until that time, it had only been maintained to the current adoption limits at 158 Pacheco Road. I have some photographs here. In 2010, I had a lot of communication with Joe Mike Duran, Rick Chavez, and Adam Baker. That was our first run. So somewhere in your archives is the context from all that. Mr. Chavez and I were basically in agreement as to the two basic problems, water and lack of drainage. So since 2006, as you can see, the material substance and the road itself has been more than seriously degraded, it's unrecognizable, it's dangerous, and my wife is petrified at driving along it after the rain or in the snow. Lack of drainage has been exacerbated by, two years ago, the big yellow grader came in, and also obviously turned on my land and went out, but it succeeded only in pushing materials from the top of what was a good camber to the sides of the road. So the only potential for drainage of the water, a seki runoff, snow melt, last night's monsoon, is basically gravitational into ponding or going down the hill. I have other pictures, and it's happening this morning as I drove out. So we have ponding, silt, destruction of basic materials, displacement, erosion, and erosion from water running. In fact, in some pictures, you can see there's stone has been exposed because it's washed the topsoil away. That's one of the key problems. We have had the problem exacerbated by, let's say, overzealous irrigation and incomplete drainage channels on at least two of my neighbor's properties. That's been fixed now. So we have dug, and I've personally dug 100 meters of extra channel to capture the water running downhill from the Del Monte Aseki, and directing it basically to the conduits that I have. We put in at least six conduits, two or three, the bottom right-hand photograph of this first file has been dinged up by the grader. There are two other instances of totally dinged-up conduits. But basically, I'm just asking, pleading to petition to have the road adopted, and the key thing would be material and drainage, and probably some cutting back with that industrial-strength propeller the county has. I firmly believe there's no emphasis on widening the road, there seems to be no point unless it helps the drainage. But with cutting back some of the materials, maybe we could go forward, one please? Again, it's a consistent story, and you can see where it's massive ponding, which makes driving a little hairy, to say the least. And then I walked the two tenths of a mile with a pickaxe to create drainage holes, and the material that's been shoved aside. One more, please, just the last one. More ponding, top left, massive displacement of what was useful materials, it just now blocks drainage, and churning and churning after the ponding. And bottom right-hand corner, the topic of turnaround has always been there, I've answered that even when Mr. Joe Mike Duran was the commissioner and came to our property in 2008, I believe. The grader has used it, other county road vehicles have used it since I've lived there in 2007. I made it about 25 or 30 feet deep, the grader can easily turn around, so it has ingress and egress. In fact, it's got a better turnaround than where the grader currently stops at number 158 Pacheco Road. I don't know, I don't understand how he does that, but good driver, I guess.
Steve, Bob, do we have a petition sufficient to trigger the road viewer aspect of this process?
There is, Mr. Chairman. The road viewers would have to be appointed and directed to go out. And as we've discussed before, before the commission can act, if a majority of the road viewers are in favor of adopting the road, then their report and a survey has to be filed with the county clerk 10 days prior to the meeting, at which the commission considers the matter. What we've done to avoid unnecessary cost of survey is done this in two steps. We've sent the road viewers out, there's a specific provision in the statute where the county commission can give further direction to the road viewers, so if a majority are in favor of adopting the road, then the commission could direct a survey. There's obviously the question of the funding to pay for that, some areas have volunteered to pay for it themselves, in other cases, the commission has paid for it out of county funds. That's all a matter of what the commission would have to decide. But basically, there is a petition, it only requires 10 freeholders within two miles of the proposed road.
Yeah, that's not a high hurdle. How many people use this, two tenths of a road?
There are eight property owners, one house is being built, this is my property, and Anna Ruth, one of my neighbors, lives there. And then the other, lots of land are used for grazing, cattle and horses, I've contacted those people also, and we've had some feedback to Commissioner O'Donnell on that.
What was the number? Eight. Is the two tenths connected to a current county-maintained road?
Yes, absolutely. Number 158, Mr. Toby Pocock's property, is right at the end of where the county has adopted it. Thereafter, including another lot of land owned by Mr. Pocock, is the beginning of the unadopted land.
But it's a dead end, it's not a through road?
No, it's not possible, there's a huge sump just beyond my property, which is impassable. So although, I guess it used to be a county road that ran all the way through back '75, so I'm told years ago, has been closed off for many months. So essentially, the usable Pacheco Road, if you could call these photographs usable, ends at my property. I have land above Pacheco and below Pacheco.
So we're obligated at this point, under statute, to name some road viewers and assign them to go out, is that correct?
Yes, and to name a place for them to meet and a time for them to meet, I think that you can, with comfort, delegate the time and place to the Public Works Director, but I think the commission needs to make...
And can we name our Public Roads Director as a road viewer?
Nothing in the statute that limits who you can name.
Except they have to own property?
Have to be freeholders within the county. That's the terminology in the archaic statute, but it means a landowner.
A landowner, so anybody who owns land pays property taxes can be a road viewer? Do we need three?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just a little bit of information, because we've had a lack of road viewers showing up when we've asked them to come and meet and look at the roads, which Pacheco Road was one of those roads, I've asked Earl to also go out and try to find some people that would be suitable road viewers. In a discussion with him this morning, he has found a couple more individuals, Mr. Bobby Ortega, who used to work for Lawrence Ortega Engineering and Survey, is, Bobby Miasas, I'm sorry, has volunteered his time to do that, and this is just for information, it's up to the commission. And the other individual is Mr. Dardo Trujillo, who was the state engineer for New Mexico District Five in this area. He's retired with the New Mexico Department of Transportation, and is available also, and would volunteer his time, and that's just for the purpose of information to the commission.
And, Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, we could ask Mr. Silke to be a road viewer. It can be anyone in the area as well, so whatever the commission decides.
I have a sense that we should include somebody from the road department. Mr. Salazar, the head of the road department, I think should be a road viewer, and possibly the foreman of the district where the adoption is contemplated. That's my suggestion for road viewers, and then possibly a third one would be one of the citizens you've named, who obviously have their own qualifications that would be useful.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in speaking with Mr. Salazar also, he had mentioned that somebody probably from the planning department that would have access to legal descriptions, that would have access to permitting maps of the area, would also be somebody that we could name from the county as... we could name from the county as a road viewer that would be invaluable to this process.
Bob?
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask Mr. Beeson a quick question. Do you know, Mr. Beeson, if that two tenths of a mile is currently platted so that the road crosses private property or if the property lines just go up to the edge of the road? You may or may not know that. I just, you don't know the answer to that?
All the property is certainly private, and there are boundaries running at the edge of each side of Pacheco Road. But as for plats, I'm afraid I can't answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Apologies.
It would just be helpful, but that's all right.
Yes, every little helps.
So we're going to need a motion identifying the road viewers. And I think we also need some direction for the road viewers. You know, what Mr. Malone said brings that to mind. In other words, they'll have to come back to us with enough information for us to make a good decision. And that would include approximate cost to the county, number of people who utilize the road, and the title, the title of the property.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the title on the property is a little bit of a chicken and an egg situation. They may be able to determine that without getting a survey. They may not. But it would be useful information. But to tell them they have to before the cost of a survey has been taken care of would be a burden.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I still move that we appoint road viewers to look at the road, given the suggestions of the names of our county manager. And I guess that's our first step. Anything else we need to put in the motion?
Commissioner O'Donnell, if you could also ask that the Public Works Director designate the time and place of the viewing and post the appropriate postings, that would be a good thing to include in the motion as well.
Yes, so if we could include in the motion that Mr. Salazar posts the time and location for when the road viewers meet and where they meet.
I'll go ahead and second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and in the discussion phase, we'll still need to identify the three road viewers. So Steve, do you want to propose recommendations or does a commissioner want to make it part of the motion, or both?
Yes, I thought I had it part of the motion.
Well, I think there was also two other names that were brought, which is Mr. Salazar's name and also the foreman from the area who knows those roads. So if you want to include that in the motion, I think that would...
All right, and then the third road viewer would be who?
It would be either Mr. Maestas or Mr. Trujillo. And we would ask them on a case-by-case basis to go out, depending on who's available at that time to go out with them.
Could you name the three again, please?
So my understanding was that we have the Public Works Director, which is Mr. Salazar. We have the foreman from that area. So there's five districts. There's five different foremans in those areas. So that foreman would be a road viewer. We have Mr. Dado Trujillo, who was with the New Mexico Department of Transportation. He's a retired engineer from there that has volunteered his time. And then we also have Mr. Bob Maestas, who was working for a local engineering and survey company here in Taos. And I think he also worked at some point for the town of Taos.
Of the last two, Mr. Archuleta, who would you recommend?
Off the top of my head, just because I worked for him at one point with the state of New Mexico engineers, I'd go with Mr. Dado Trujillo.
Right, so those three names.
And then I guess Mr. Maestas is an alternative.
All right, thank you very much.
So we have a motion to appoint road viewers. And we have the names of the road viewers. Commissioner Romero, you want to?
Seconded, friendly, second.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you, Mr. Beeson.
Thank you.
Onto 9B. This is a discussion regarding the adoption of Santa Stevan Road. Commissioner Jim Phambro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have in the audience, thank you for bearing with us, I have Mr. Martine Chavez and Betty Adamson that will help me through this presentation, gave them permission to slap me upside the head if I say something wrong and correct it. But, Mr. Chairman, we're at the actual end of the process of getting the road adopted. This was already voted by the commission on April 1st of last year. We have done the, we have had the survey as complete for the one mile that was previously noted. I do want to note that all residents along the one mile of Santa Stevan are paying for their culverts out of their own pockets. It's not county. The population that we're serving by this section is conservatively set at 196 residents. There are over 43 entryways, and so all those people are taking care of the culverts. The county is not doing that. The survey has been complete, and we're at the stage where we're ready for the formal adoption. However, meeting with Ms. Adamson and Mr. Chavez, myself and Earl did an additional site visit this last week. And the question of where the best turnaround would be, brought up a point, what we call the Larena land, just as it starts down into this arroyo, it's at the end of the adoption area, felt that if, when Earl pushed the snow at the end of the, at the end of a snowfall, we could create a drainage issue into Larena's yard, and it could possibly wash her out because of the way the slope is. So as much as I promised the residents of that area, the two, over 200 residents of that area, that we would get it adopted, and they were going to get some relief finally tonight, I mean today, I'm actually going to withdraw that. There's a couple of issues that I want to go over. Of that one mile that's there currently, the school bus can't go through there. There's no way to get it in there and turn it around and get it back. So those kids are walking a little over a mile down the road to get to at all points. If we extend the survey, we're going to be able to create a turnaround and a place for snow removal to be stacked and go down the natural drainage of the arroyo that's existing. So along with that, I'm asking that we send the surveyors back out there as soon as possible because we're at a very critical stage of this because the people have already spent almost $600 out of their pocket for their culverts, and those culverts are starting to get delivered. So we're in accordance, we have 100% buy-in. Mr. Chavez went and spoke to each and every resident, and when we saw the $600 amount for the culvert, we were afraid that we were going to lose some support. That wasn't the case. He was able to go and cut the commitment from everybody. So we need to keep this going. We need to give them faith that we're actually, since way before April 1st of last year when this process started, that we're finally getting somewhere. So I'm asking that we send the surveyors back out there ASAP, and we include this additional length, this additional amount of the road. It's less than a quarter of a mile. It's between one tenth and a quarter, depending on how surveys come, it comes out. And that'll be enough area. And Mr. Chavez has spoken to the landowner. There's no issue about allowing us the area for the turnout and place to push the snow. We will be protecting Larena's property so that it doesn't, we don't wash her out and create another issue that, a liability for the county. So what I'm asking, instead of adoption at this day reluctantly, is that we authorize town staff to send the surveyors. We include this other tenth to a quarter mile and show that. Then we get that, and hopefully within two weeks to the next meeting or the following meeting, that we do the formal adoption and finally put this one to bed.
Bob?
It'll be recorded with the clerk's office. And once, because that's already been done with the survey that we completed.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the survey's been completed. We'll go back and redo that portion of the survey, as Commissioner Phambro has stated, and then we'll record it with the clerk's office. It has not been recorded at this time.
Bob?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Phambro, I don't know what the exact discussions have been with the landowner, but just a verbal that it's okay isn't going to be good enough. We need to get an easement.
Right, we understand that.
Okay, and so if you would include in your motion that we...
Upon receipt of an easement.
Exactly. And if we could get the contact information before we break for lunch, so I can know who to talk to.
Okay.
And we'll get that from Mr. Chavez. Martine, Betty, have I forgotten anything where we're at? And again, I apologize to both of you personally that we're not doing what you guys have worked very hard for, for the last three years for today, but we're going to make this best and we're going to do it right.
I don't have anything to add except for just saying that the enthusiasm there is pretty high, and people are ready. And when we, I talked to each of them individually and mentioned an approximation of what they would be spending for culverts, and it was, it's from around $280 to $300, $600, $650, $680 in some cases. And those folks are, they're okay with that, you know?
Buying them locally.
Right, yeah, we're buying them locally for them. Well, no commercials, right? But we are buying it locally. And I will get you the name, and I have, we've had a verbal okay. I did mention that they needed to speak with you to do the appropriate paperwork, so you could explain that to them, but I will get with you after. Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you for staying the extra five minutes.
So that's my motion. Well, that's what I'm asking of you guys, and I'll ask you guys to make the motion.
Is that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman, or?
I don't know. Jim, is that in the form of a motion?
I presented. I don't think it'd be proper for me to make the motion on something I presented.
Well, there's nothing in the rules that prevents you from doing so.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that...
I'll go ahead and second.
...be, complete the survey with the additional property as Earl and our foreman, Adel Molina, know where the cutoff is. It's basically, for the record, the bottom of the arroyo. What's our best way to describe, bottom of the arroyo?
Yeah.
Okay. And right at the natural drainage. And we include that and get it back ASAP with other possible easement information and signed easement, ready for adoption.
Second.
Bob, do we have to send the road viewers out? Or would it be appropriate for us to send the road viewers out with the new survey in hand, and then them come back to us with the information, the rest of the information, like approximate cost and number of persons served?
That would be appropriate. It's not necessary that they come back, but it would certainly make sense with this change.
And I don't know, Commissioner Phambro, what you feel about that, if...
I just don't want to delay this anymore. These people have been so patient.
But, so if we didn't do that, then it would be an agenda item to approve adoption based on the original road viewers? Recommendation, isn't there some requirement that you have to have a road viewer recommendation?
There is, there is. And I think, Chairman, I think now that you put it in those terms, it would be appropriate to have the road viewers recommend the additional, whatever it is, the additional length and
Who are the original road viewers years ago?
Mr. Commissioner Phambro, fortunately, the statute actually gives the commission the power to change road viewers in the middle of the process. So if you wanted to, you don't have to worry about finding the original road viewers and...
And can we appoint them right now? Mr. Chavez, Ms. Adamson, and Earl? Already looked at it, and then we're done with that, and we're not moving at the speed of government. Some more?
You have the power in a pending petition, as the commission, to send new road viewers. You could take the whole three different road viewers and send them back out. You have the power to do that under the statute.
If we can vote on that one, then I'll have a motion for new road viewers as soon as we're done, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Call for the vote?
Yes?
Yes.
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 Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Phambro.
I'd like to make a motion that the road viewers for this additional work for this project be Mr. Martine Chavez, Ms. Betty Adamson, and Mr. Earl Martinez.
Earl Salazar, sorry. Hey, we have a motion for the appointment of road viewers. We have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. It's a fairly new process, this adoption of roads. It's not something that Taos County has engaged in in the past, but we did start it a couple years ago. And there are situations when I think the local government does have to step up and do it. One of the things that we, that a past commission agreed upon with this new policy of adopting select roads, had to do with the budget. And the prior commission had agreed to take whatever the cost was from the road out of the budget of the individual district. I don't know if that's going to be the policy going forward of the current commission, but it's something that I suppose we'll have to address when we get to the adoption of this road, take into account the cost of bringing it up to county standards, and decide where we're going to get that money from.
What district is Santa Stevan?
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, could you clarify how much each district gets each year in roads? Is it 130, or how much is it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that is actually going to be clarified in the preliminary budget for you today. And Mr. Cordova will have that number because it has changed from the first budget that we presented to the commission.
And once we get the pilt money, isn't that pilt money pooled, a portion of that is pooled into the road fund?
That's all included in the presentation this afternoon, yes.
So there's two main sources. One is the local government funding, and there's about $60,000 each for each district from local government funding. And then there's however much we can afford out of the 399 budget. All right, well, with that taken care of business.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for waiting with us, and...
You want something done, you get this guy behind it, and he's going to get it done. Thank you, Mr. Chavez, for all your help.
Thank you.
We have a motion to break for lunch.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. We'll be back in approximately one hour, 1:30. Can we get a motion to come back into session?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Item number 10A, discussion regarding a grant agreement, DJG 30, amendment number two. Herbert, DWI Coordinator, good afternoon, Herbert.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commission Members, Mr. Archuleta and Mr. Malone. I'm here to request if we can approve this amendment number two. What we did this year is we moved monies to line items where we could spend it before the year ended, and that was our intention. We sent the request over to DFA, and then they sent us this agreement so that you guys could sign off on it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just for your information, this is grant money? So if we don't spend it, we return the money back. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So move to amend number two. Is that amendment number two?
Yeah.
So make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Edward.
Yes. Thank you, Herbert. Yes. Thank you, Herbert. Spend it wisely. Item B is a discussion regarding the approval of a contract between Taos County and Taos Pueblo for solid waste removal. All right. Thank you, Bob.
For a number of years, we've, Mr. Chairman, for a number of years, we've had an agreement with Taos Pueblo to haul their solid waste to the landfill, and it expires at the end of June. This is simply a replacement. It does make two substantive changes. One, it increases the tipping fee to correspond to the tipping fee that's now charged by the landfill, and two, Edward indicated that it should not include their recycling or scrap metal. So it does not. Other than that, it's the same substantively as it has been in past years.
So move, Mr. Chair, to approve a contract with Taos Pueblo 2015-48.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Item C is a discussion regarding a similar contract, and this is between Taos County and Pecorice.
Mr. Chairman, this is essentially the same as the agreement with Taos Pueblo. The same substantive changes have been made. That is to say, the tipping fee has been increased to reflect the increase of the landfill, and the reference to recycling and scrap metal has been removed. Otherwise, it's the same. It expires at the end of June, and so this is its replacement.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioners, I so move, we approve contract TCC 2015-48 between Taos County and, I'm sorry, TCC 2015-049 between Taos County and Pecorice Pueblo.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, Mr. Malone. On to resolutions and ordinances. Number 11 on the Agenda A is a discussion regarding the approval of Resolution 2015-23 to appoint members to the Taos County Evaluation Protest Board. And we have our Assessor Abel Montoya and Deputy Assessor Randy Baca.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commission, Mr. Archuleta and Mr. Malone. This protest board is appointed by the Commission. This is for evaluation protests that are through the month of April. We have 180 days to resolve them, and if they are not resolved, they go to the protest board. This protest board is appointed by you, two members and two alternates, and these are appointees are for a two-year term. And there will be a training for these protest board members now in June and July. And these are appointed, and these were done, but this resolution was prepared by Mr. Malone.
Great. And we do have the proposed names of the members. Gene Trujillo, who's been involved in Taos Real Estate for many years. Penny Worlow, she spells it with an I-E, not a Y. Beth Pittman and Sam Rechner, all involved in the real estate markets in Taos. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
As far as just keeping the same, so move?
We have a motion to accept these nominations as members. Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Move. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On to B is a discussion regarding the approval of Resolution 2015-24, and this is to impose an annual non-prohibitive license tax for the privilege of holding a state liquor license. Ana Martinez.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hi.
So I come before you, Resolution 2015-24. Basically, it's just a yearly annual resolution that we have to renew. It expires in July, and it has gone through legal. So I stand for questions.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, is there any change from previous years?
There's not.
Can we charge more?
No.
These are the allowable limits.
Hmm?
I'm not charged more.
Mr. Malone?
We, there's a statutory maximum. I don't know whether these are at the maximum or not. I satisfied myself that they were, back when I reviewed it, that they did not exceed the maximum, but I don't recall what the maximums are.
What is this money used for?
Good question.
It is a good question.
This goes into the general fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you know how much was collected last year?
We have 18 entities. Each of them brings in about $325. That includes their license and their liquor license and business license.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'd like to see what the maximum amounts are. I move to table this.
Do we want to bring it back up today? If we do, I can excuse myself, and I check very quickly right now.
Yeah, I...
I probably need to have this done.
It expires now in July, so...
So let's get this done today.
All right. So in that case, I guess we'll take a motion to amend the agenda to table this item?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Under Agenda Item 12, Department Matters A, this is a discussion regarding the approval of out-of-state travel for actual reimbursement to attend a foster-grandparent senior companion program in Fort Worth, Texas, from June 8th to June 10th. And Amanda, going to handle this for Mr. Trujillo?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman. This is a national conference for the foster-grandparent senior companion trip. It's an annual conference that's going to be held in Fort Worth, Texas. This is to request out-of-state approval for Shona Modis Bond. She's the director for the program, and she would like to go on actuals for this trip. It's grant-funded and grant-approved or approval.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item B is a discussion regarding NMLA 14L 2010. It's for the planned design construction of a veteran cemetery. Good afternoon, Anita.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. So you have a couple of these before you. The first one is severance tax bond in the amount of $100,000 to plan, design, construct a veteran cemetery. The reversion date on this is June 30th, 2018. And I believe these monies are going to be used for plan and design for the fence and the infrastructure. So I stand for any questions.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I see this was 2010. So this was five years ago we got this appropriation?
No, it says 14-L-2010. 2010 is an appropriation number that the, that DFA assigns.
And then, didn't we receive, we'll have some more money, right?
This is the appropriation for 14. We still have funds left over from 13. So those will also be used for plan and design. And we're hoping after the plan and design, we'll actually have enough money to start the infrastructure, the road and the fence.
And will it be our contractor that we just approved last meeting?
No, ma'am, it will not, because we don't have a contract for them as of yet.
Who will the contract be with?
We'll have to bid it. It's going to be, we'll have to get three bids. It'll be a sealed bid process.
I'm just wondering why we can't use the contractor we hired?
Because there's not a contract right now. If he has a signed contract when it's time to go out, then yeah, I can use that contractor.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think you're talking about the engineer, and that's different from a contractor, Commissioner O'Donnell. So the, we have an on-call engineer to deal with this. This is a special appropriation just for the veteran cemetery. So once we have those appropriations in place, we'll send them out to bid. Right now, we're really in the plan and design.
Correct.
Portion of it. And so the majority of that will go probably to the architect in order to do that.
And we can't use our new architect?
We don't have an architect. It's an engineer that we hired, an engineering firm that we hired for this process. But no, we can't use...
We can't use WH Pacific?
No. They can bid on it. I mean, on, I guess, on plan and design. I'm not sure if WH Pacific does plan and design.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, I believe at this time, it's best we use the architect who did the master plan. He already knows all about the project. He's been in touch with the people from the state and federal side, and that's who would do the plan design. The contract work, again, would go out to bid.
What are you asking us to prove today?
The appropriation. Do you want the money? Sign on the line.
So this isn't, this isn't an approval of publication for any requests?
No, sir, it's not. The one, this one and the other three that you are signing is just saying, yes, we want $100,000, and we can spend it as to the regulated scopes that they've given us.
Well, that's an easy question.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Good, I'm glad, because you've had some tough ones today.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Item C is a similar issue.
Yes, sir, it is. You have before you appropriation number L13-L-1794 in the amount of $50,000. Plan, design, construct a fire station for the San Cristobal Fire Department. The reversion date on this is June 30th, 2017.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
And the reversion date means you have to spend it by then, or contract by then?
Correct.
Spend it?
Spend it by then.
Okay, better get busy.
Mr. Chair, real quick, I question, Mr. Archuleta, had we discussed, probably in prior meetings, of the template of the firehouse that's in Vilarde, and we'd use that, maybe downscaling some of our smaller volunteer fire departments? Is that something that we could still use, or do, or would we have to do a, use this $50,000 to do a whole new redesign?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that was our plan, but they won't release the plans to us. And so in reality, what we're going to do is come up with a template. We've also asked, I believe it was for the, there's another fire department over by the Pinasco area. I think it was in Truchas or that area, that Ria Riba, which had a little bit better solar design pattern on it and looked a little bit better. And we also asked for that one, but weren't able to get it. So what we're going to do is come up with a template and then start using those for our other fire departments as we move down the line on this. But you're correct, Commissioner, in that.
Thank you for the info.
So in the future, we won't have to make a legislative request for $50,000 to come up with a design, because we'll have a design that we use?
Correct.
And then we can make our request for actual, hopefully, construction money. It's a good plan.
And, Mr. Chairman, the State Fire Marshal's Office is also trying to do that, to help people, so that all the money will go in construction and not design. It happens throughout the state, so Vernon Muller is trying to get that, that service available, that we wouldn't have to waste that money in that...
Mr. Hartmier?
Chairman, members of the Commission, the $50,000 will not be for planning. It will actually be for construction. We'll have to value, design it with Mr. Sanchez and working with the fire department. We're probably not going to have enough money with the $50,000. We're probably looking at two bays. Hopefully, we'll get to sit down with the fire department this week, and with our fire chief, and with Mr. Sanchez. And we were going to meet last week, but we weren't able to meet, and we're going to see how we can stretch out the $50,000. And the plan is to use that money for construction. They have one, two, three trucks all over San Cristobal and the Lama area that they need to be housed by this winter, so they could start qualifying for their state fire marshal allotment. So that's why we need to get this two-bay garage fire department done as soon as possible.
Well, I guess we'll find out, huh? I guess we'll find out when we put it out to bid for design, how much it's going to cost. It does seem crazy to have to spend a lot on design, as other Commissioners have noted. But we will take the money, I think. So do we have a motion?
And a second.
We do. All right. Call for the vote, then?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item D is NMLA 14L 2011, and this is for the purchase equipment vehicle for the Sheriff's Department.
Yes, sir. This one also have, it's $50,000 to purchase and equip a vehicle for the Sheriff's Department. The reversion date on this is also June 30th, 2017.
And this money was appropriated last year?
No, we, all these grant agreements I got two weeks ago.
Okay.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. And then we're asked to consider whether or not to accept money for the planned design construction, equipment improvements to the roof windows, and install an air conditioner at the top of community center.
Yes, sir. This appropriation number is 14-L-2009, $53,000. This one has a reversion date of June 30th, 2018, because it's a construction project, so they usually give us a little more time.
Commissioners, do we want this money?
Sure. So moved, sir.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. F is a discussion regarding open-closed appropriations.
Yes, sir. At this time, I would also like to let you know that I did get the grant agreement, finally, for Amalia. It came in this morning. So when it comes for approval to you, it's going to have a 2013 date on it. That does not mean that I was holding it since 2013, just saying. I did not have it. So you have before you some legislative, state grant awards and legislative appropriations that I have been working on throughout the last 12 to 14 months. I just kind of wanted to give you an overview of appropriations that we had here that were closed out, and appropriations that are going to be coming through into our coffers, and where I'm at on the status. So as you can see, I've expended out of an award amount of $1,142,819.11. I've been able to expend $423,677.29. So I only have $964,000 to go. I'm on it, though.
Half of that's already spoken forward with this year's CDBGs, so...
Correct.
You're even more than...
Correct, because this, again, the CDBG project should be completed by the end of June.
So this is not an action item. This is...
No, it's just an information only, to let you know that I'm working. And I'm actually working back there in my office.
This would actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, please.
This would be a good quarterly update thing?
Sure.
Yeah.
You got it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, is this the full list of legislative appropriations that the county has?
At this time, yes, it is, Commissioner.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
With, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman. They're all, some of these are, now that we've approved them here, we still have to get the signed paperwork back to do the budgets. And then I just got the one on Amalia, and we are still waiting for two or three more, I believe, from DFA to come through. So, but at this time, this is what we have.
Great. We'll keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Move on to item G, which is a discussion regarding positions and job descriptions for the Fleet Management Department, Human Resources Director Renee Weber. Good afternoon, Renee.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commission. As you know, Taos County is taking the steps necessary to create and organize a fleet maintenance department, and these job descriptions are part of those steps. So the first is the Fleet Maintenance Director. This is a new position. This is a new position. This is an exempt position, and this person will be overseeing the ICIP plan for the replacement of vehicles, preventive maintenance. They'll be in charge of the inventory, and most of the repairs, they'll be directing the work of the other mechanics. The second job description is a new job description for mechanic, and it streamlines and consolidates the job descriptions that we have into one description.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I just want to sort of clarify is that they are new job descriptions, but the positions were taken from within Taos County, existing positions that had been out there, and we're consolidating those positions under one department at this point. So, we're pulling the ones from the sheriff's department, I believe, the ones from.
Public Works.
Public Works, to do this.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Archuleta, pay grade E1 and.
That's the first level of exempt. It's 2329.
Well, just who else, I mean, what other positions are at that? I was.
Our facilities management director is at that level.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, where will these positions be housed, at the armory? Is that what the plan is?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, no. Actually, for right now, what we're looking is consolidating our public works department up at the armory, and that decision was made, again, based on looking at where we haul gravel from, where we have a storage area, so that we can get the gravel out of the Herdner Road Department and get that all up into that commercial corridor by where the armory is. And then, we'll be using the building at the Herdner location in order to do all the mechanic work, and the majority of that mechanic work will be done inside that building in the facility. If and when the, the commission, I'm sorry, decides to move forward. If we do with housing, then we're trying to have a plan in place to hopefully gear up for a fleet maintenance department here across the complex, across the street, but that would be a whole new department and building area.
Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve these new job descriptions?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. It's a good plan. Appreciate it. On to item H. This is a discussion regarding approval of a food purchase for the Taos senior program in the amount of $41,844.40.
Good morning, Commissioner, or afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, again.
This request is to increase our contract for CES by the $41,000, since it is over the $20,000 threshold. So, the commission had previously approved a bar to put monies into our food expense, so this is just coming before you to increase the contract.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second. This is, the seniors are graduating this year. Help them out, feed them.
Exactly. We want to.
Graduating.
Before they leave home. Last good meal.
Before they leave home, let's feed them.
Last good meal. Michael?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney, audience, I just, first of all, like to thank the finance department, Amanda and Lupe Leandro and all, the entire finance department, because this program has been an interesting endeavor, and without their support and help, we couldn't do what we need to do to ensure that our seniors are taken care of. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the maintenance department, Mark and his crew, and also Earl and his crew from the road department, because they have helped us out tremendously, too. So, again, this program is doing good. We're increasing our units. We've met all the thresholds that the state has had us do, and we're going to be getting some more money for equipment and maintenance and vehicles in the near future. The grant, I know Leandro's been working hard on trying to get that information to long-term services, so, once we get that, we'll be coming for you for grant agreements to purchase vehicles and equipment and for building maintenance. So, again, thank you.
Mike, do you want to mention also to the Commissioner about the painting of the vans?
I was just going to ask on the blue.
Yes, sir. I took one van to paint yesterday. Amanda and I had been working diligently for trying to find monies to move around to paint these vehicles, and we were able to do that. So, the first, we got a good deal. I was able to get both vans painted for $8,800, and it's a $9,000 with tax, I think, approximately $9,000 with tax, but it's locally, we're going to paint them locally here. But they, the quotes, some of the quotes that I got were for $8,000 for one van, and then $12,000 or $14,000 for the other one, but we were able to get a good deal, and we're going to be painting both of them for $8,800 bucks. So, one of them is at the paint shop right now, so, thank you again. We're looking forward to using those ones.
Bill for $4,400 each, I think we got a decent deal, and hopefully, we're going to get a lot of years of use out of them.
They're in good shape. I got to take them out for a run, and they're in good shape. What we're going to be doing is I'm going to have some assistance, I'm going to be requesting some assistance from the RTD people to come and train our drivers, how to use them properly, because they're a little different than what we're used to, but they're in a lot better shape than some of the vehicles we have, so, we certainly want to be able to use them. Matter of fact, those vehicles are going to be used for the senior Olympics now in June, to take our senior Olympic people to Roswell, so that'll be a plus. I'm sure they're going to be done by then, but we are in gratitude to the RTD service and whoever's responsible, and also Commissioner Fanbro and Mayor Barone for, and of course, Steve was involved in this also, so thank you. And I do want to say that we did take seniors yesterday to a trip, and we took 15 seniors, 13 seniors yesterday, 14 seniors to Albuquerque yesterday to take, go on the train. So, they got back last night about 10 o'clock, but those are the services that we provide for our seniors, and they loved it, and we're going to try to do more of those with these buses that we get in. So, also, our doors are put in in Cuesta, they're, everybody's real happy. The Village of Cuesta got their doors put on, and now, there's no more mice going into the building, so that's a plus. But again, we're moving forward. Again, thanks to everyone for all their assistance.
Thank you, Michael. It's, what are we, our first year of taking over the program, and it was a big responsibility, but I think you and everybody else at the county has done a really good job on a really important service, so, thank you.
Well, I haven't lost my hair yet, so.
Really?
Is that?
You haven't lost all of it.
Look again.
Is that something that you're directing towards myself and Commissioner Rowan?
Mr. Commissioner, that's part of our heritage, and it's something that we have to live with, so, it's inevitable.
Everybody can be able.
That thick head of hair.
Where did you?
So, where are we?
Mr. Chairman, I ask that we bring back Resolution 11B. Oh, okay.
We'll just call for the vote first on this one. We do have a motion and a second on the table? Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and now, we have a motion to bring back the table item?
Yes, I so moved that we bring back Resolution 11B, discussion of 2015-24.
And do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the statute provides for a maximum amount on the license tax of $250. The resolution establishes that amount for all licenses except Sunday permits and nonprofit clubs, and it sets a lower amount for Sunday permits and nonprofit clubs of $200 and $25. Chairman, motion to approve Resolution 2015-24.
I'll go ahead and second, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. On to item 13, Budget Matters A. This is a discussion regarding approval of the preliminary budget.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, yes, I'm here today to ask for permission for submission of this preliminary budget, and I just want to go over the, once again, real quickly, the process. This preliminary budget is essentially just a working document for us to be able to operate in the interim from July 1st till August, when we have a final budget approved. We can't do a final budget at this time, because we don't know our cash balances and our end-of-year stuff. So, basically, what we're passing today is expenditures. We're approving everything that you guys talked about during the work study. I will go through the quick PowerPoint, just to touch on a few things that were changed. There was a couple of things that changed. If you noticed, we got down to $11 surplus, which I mentioned, it would move pretty quick, but we also changed our property tax collection rate to 90%. We were able to receive our pre-protest values from the assessor, so after all protests were factored in, the amount actually went down. It decreased our revenue. So, in order to make up for that, we went up to the 90%, which everyone's comfortable with at this point, with the pre-protest numbers in there. So, I've been able to work with our assessor and deputy assessor on that, and we, and the treasurer as well, on the collection. We had to increase our sheriff's overtime budget. You've seen that we've been asking for bars here at the end of the year, in order just to be able to get through the year. It looks like, just to get the sheriff's department through holidays, it's about a $60,000, which is what we had given him originally. We put it back to the $80,000 that he had last year, and there's $80,000 in there at this time, at his request. So, we also adjusted our assessor's budget, and we adjusted our facilities management budget. And what we did with facilities management was, we did add the full-time custodial plus of the six part-time that are there. So, we gave him essentially one full-time help right now, and we have the six positions for him to try and. So, we heard that request, we did what we could to find that, and we squeezed that in there. The capital enhancement fund was where we made more changes. You brought up some things that we needed to adjust during the work study, so we increased all our expenditures to make sure we account for rollover projects. So, outstanding money that was out there that, for projects that we're working on now, we made sure to add that in. We also added in $50,000 from Amalia Community Center, as an example. That's not going to be complete by this year, but will carry over, but we've already started. And then, I increased your road allocation for each of the commissioners. So, that was heard as well. Commissioner Blankenhorn kept pounding on the numbers, and the way we were able to do that was, we got a truer cash picture to start with, and then, we did move a little bit more of our litigation and judgment money with consult from our attorney. We moved that into unbudgeted revenues. We do have a large amount of unbudgeted revenues, and so, we took 150 of the $300,000 and put it in unbudgeted revenues that, basically, worst-case scenario, we come back to you with a DFA resolution to put that into, into motion.
Mr. Chairman, how, I'm sorry, how much more in the road fund are you talking per commission?
Let me get down there. I believe we got up to a number of $500,000 total, so $100,000 each new money. And then, what was carried over from your projects from last year that haven't, as an example, Commissioner Omero hadn't spent the money from this year's allocation yet, that will roll over, and he'll have that available for the project that's getting underway. So, total, I believe, there's $639,000 in that line item now, because 139 of it is rollover. So, we also adjusted our indigent fund to include healthcare outreach services. That was discussed during the work study, and we added $150,000 for that at this time. And then, we will be adjusting that a little bit more between now and the final budget, because statute did stipulate how we're supposed to budget for safety net, care pool, and we have to have, we have to change the name of one of our funds, and we probably will eliminate the other fund. As you saw in the work study, it's a little confusing with the healthcare fund, indigent fund. We're probably just going to merge them and eliminate one of them and make it all a lot easier to understand. So, those are the main changes, the only real changes. It did get us to what you see here at an $11 surplus, essentially. It is, I will note that, as the treasurer had brought up in our work study, the transfers in and out. We do have temporary loans outstanding according, at this time, of $933,772. That money is required to be budgeted by DFA. It has to be in here. We do understand it's non-recurring. So, in this case, it is kind of helping us balance our budget. It's getting us to that point. It's a requirement by DFA to do that, though, and I just want to make that clear, that we do understand that it is one-time, non-recurring revenue. What I think is most important to note, though, is budgeted revenue covers employee salary completely. And so, everything we do actually have coming in, minus transfers out for salaries, is covered. So, we are covered in personnel. Moving on to the general fund, I could go through these relatively quickly. I'm not going to go through all the history, because it's basically the same history from the work study, but our proposed budget leaves us about an $11 surplus at this time. And here's our revenue breakdown. So, I was a little wrong this morning when I said 89% of our revenue is the property tax, it's 86%. And that's mainly because we did repurpose that third 1/8, and now, we have state taxes at 1.1 million, which is now 9% of our budget. So, we did help alleviate some of the stress on the property tax. And then, just to go through the rest of these revenues, we don't talk about them a lot, but the rent of public facilities, license and permits, intergovernmental grants, miscellaneous revenues. The clerk mentioned a revenue stream earlier that does go into the general fund. Our planning and zoning revenues go into the general fund. So, basically, any recording fees, permits, that is collected from a general fund program or an elected office goes back into the general fund. The general fund proposed expenses were basically the same. We didn't change much, other than what I had noted. Public Works looks the same, detention is the same, and solid waste. We only added in the transfer of the $30,000 back to the county, that temporary loan we gave them, we may not collect in this budget year, but we hope that we can collect it from them next year. So, we did budget that coming back if everything goes well with the solid waste and the new fees and stuff. And that's really all I have for you today. I stand for any questions. I know that you guys had a chance to look at all the detail over the weekend. I don't want to pull up all the detail unless there's a specific question, but I'm more than happy to try and answer that.
So, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, we're required to have 3/12ths?
Yes, ma'am.
And where, can you give us the numbers, just so, are we above the 3/12ths? Or where, are we right on the 3/12ths?
So, as I mentioned, we don't know cash specifically, so we're assuming a beginning cash of $5 million, which is conservative, with budgeted revenues of 12.599, budgeted transfers out of 1.8 million, budgeted expenditures of 10.768. We are left with an ending cash balance of $5,011. So, our requirement of the 3/12ths is 2.69 million. So, beyond the 3/12ths, we have 2.3 million beyond that in unbudgeted reserves.
And $11.
Yes, and $11 that we hopefully will add to that and increase our net position.
Keep it away from the sheriff.
The sheriff is doing a good job, but give him more money.
So, may I just make some brief comments?
Certainly.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners?
Of course.
I'm just hoping at some point, legal could look at the franchise fees that we get from Comcast. I did notice you had budgeted $12,000, and we do not have a new contract with Comcast. And so, I think we really are missing out on a lot more money from that franchise fee. So, at some point, it would be really nice to start negotiations with Comcast for the franchise fee, because you have, somewhere in there, it said $12,000 we're collecting, and I think, given all the new changes in internet and triple play, that we need to collect more. So, I, at some point, if we could start the negotiations with Comcast, I think we may see some more money there. So, I'm just trying to find more ways to get more money in the budget. I think all the commissioners know that I really would like to increase the budget for stray hearts. I hope the commission would support me. I hope we can sit down before the final budget and see if we can move some money around. So, I would like to meet with Mr. Cordova and just see how we can give them more money. You know, they do have that balloon payment of $205,000 in September, so I'm concerned that they could be in a crisis. A few other things, the healthcare, indigent fund, healthcare services. I'd really like to see a little more money in there, under the healthcare services, but I guess that's something that could always be moved around later, because.
Yes.
Right, okay. And then, could we please have Monica Griego apply for the clean and beautiful funds? Make sure that that gets done, because we missed out this last year, and I just got and I've just got a lot of trash to pick up in my district, and going to need some help if we can get groups up in my area to get funded. So if, could make a note when the clean and beautiful fund deadline is, if we could get that. And just, I'm really against any money being used for killing of our wildlife. And so the farm and ranch, it has $2,500. I don't want to see any money in there. That's just my personal opinion that I am expressing. I don't know how the commission feels, but I just hate spending any public funds on killing wildlife. And I, so I'm just putting that out there to let you know that I'm really against that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that's grant-funded, or?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's called our Taylor grazing grant. It comes as a disbursement from DFA, and it's essentially for remediation of, yeah, we've been using it for prairie dog holes. We don't always exterminate the prairie dogs, from what I understand. We have entered into contracts where we remove them and put them somewhere else. And that money can also be used for that. But it is an essential program within our ag center for ranchers that do irrigating and that have these prairie dog holes on their property. I understand it's a big issue when you have these prairie dog holes sucking up all the sequeia water that you're finally getting in, and this remediation money has been used for that specific purpose.
I understand. It was taken out of the budget a number of years and put into, from my understanding, can be used to put in road funds. So I would really like you to research that, because I believe you can use that money for other areas, and it can be moved. And I know it's a small amount, but to me, it's an issue that a lot of people in the county do not agree with killing wildlife and using public funds to kill wildlife.
Chairman, I will do that research, and Ms. O'Donnell has requested a sit-down meeting with myself. I'll have the manager's office attend as well, and we'll go through the budget in detail to her liking when we get that opportunity.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gallegos.
If I may, Commissioner O'Donnell, one of the things that I've encompassed over the years is that these prairie dogs start encroaching more towards roads, and they start kind of burrowing underneath, and they have issues. Then we start having issues with the roads as well. So it's kind of, you know, I understand where you want to be, we'll still have some compassion for wildlife, but at the same point, when it starts messing with some of the infrastructure that we put in, you know, we have to find a good balancing act. So, I mean, it's kind of take that in upon, you know, as we try to look for funds or try to transfer funds over. It does have that occurrence to start working on, them start working on burrowing under roads as well, so.
Plus, they carry disease.
Right.
Precious water, we talk about every meeting, goes away and we don't get to use it. So if we're finished, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the preliminary budget that Mr. Cordova and his staff has worked very hard on. It's admirable that it's balanced. I think it has met the needs that we've talked to you about in the previous meeting, and I compliment you and your staff. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Chairman, I too would like to thank my staff. They have been working diligently, and we started this process earlier than last year. We'll probably start it next year earlier than this year. So we keep, it's almost a nonstop, and our auditor's already scheduled to come out in June, so this is done, and we get on to the next thing, so.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to violate anything that we're supposed to not do, but I would like to direct you to hide that $11 from that man right there. We had 42,000, and we had to do his overtime.
I'm still here.
You're still here.
Sorry, you brought backup, so just keep going, I guess.
I didn't sleep well last night with these two presentations today, I got to tell you. Well, thank you for finding the additional money for roads. It'll, it's nice to get some extra work done, and it's a good, healthy budget. We really appreciate the work, so thank you. On to item B, which is a budget adjustment for the treasurer's office.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this budget adjustment is essentially correcting what I believe was an error in the last budget adjustment we made. We over-allocated the para retirement contribution. And so we're asking to put money back into full-time positions, employee training, transportation expense in per diem, and taking it out of the para retirement, so.
So move.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Now we have a budget adjustment for the sheriff's department.
Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm sorry. We are once again looking at adding money into the maintenance line item, maintenance contract line item, taking it out of full-time position. Our sheriff and myself stumbled upon a contract that was entered into last year that was a three-year contract that I think we all kind of neglected to budget this year's expense, and it was for our TASER cameras. And so at this time, the only place that we could find the money was from his full-time positions. The payment that's due this year is $7,257. We've also increased cellphone usage. We've given some officers better phones, newer phones, and that has increased the total cost. So we're increasing their telephone budget as well by $700, also taking it out of full-time positions. There is savings in full-time positions, because our sheriff has not named an undersheriff, so he's been operating all this time without an undersheriff, which has created his savings in full-time positions. And I do recommend approval on this. It's an oversight we will not make again.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fambro.
In light of the AG's investigation into TASER, how long do we have this contract with sheriff?
Chair, Commissioners, the contract was signed approximately one year ago. It is a three-year contract, and we are bound to that. We actually explored alternatives of terminating this contract and going with a different camera manufacturer on a year-to-year that wouldn't require a contract for the cloud, the storage portion of it, only to find that this contract is written in such a way that we would have to pay this three years out regardless. So that's put off for another two years.
Commissioner.
Thank you for looking into that, Sheriff. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, on that note, we also looked into how that was procured. We did properly procure that contract. There were a lot of essential, extra costs in, if not using TASER, that we factored into that, so it was procured.
All right, so we have a budget adjustment on the table. Is there a motion? We don't have a motion yet. Okay.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. On to item D, which is a budget adjustment for the senior companion program.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, this budget adjustment is increasing transportation expense to allocate the budget for that out-of-state conference travel that you approved earlier. We're also adding $2,000 to stipends for our volunteers. We're adding $300 for meal reimbursements for our volunteers, and we're taking all of this out of mileage reimbursement. And I do recommend approval.
So move.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Item E, a budget adjustment for the foster-grandparent program.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you also heard about this earlier. We are requesting a budget adjustment out of mileage reimbursement into maintenance of vehicles in order to paint the buses that we received from the RTD. This money is a federal grant that had to be spent, and we did our best to figure out the most appropriate way to spend it, and this was a perfect match. It's a big amount of money we got to spend in one transaction, and it's going to get these two buses on the road and operational for us. So I'd like to thank Amanda, working with Mike, for really finding the ways to squeeze this money out and get it spent. I recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Item F is a budget adjustment for the Latier Fire Department, or the Latier, yes, Volunteer Fire Department, under the FEMA grant.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, I'll admit I don't know a lot of details about this. It is a FEMA grant that was requested and acquired by the volunteer fire department. They're asking to increase their other contractual line item by the amount of $5,468, taking it out of non-capital furniture fixture and equipment. They are using this money to pay for a videographer, I believe, to videotape trainings that they put on. And I'm not familiar with all the very specific details. It is an allowable expense through the grant, which we did double-check, that the grant agreement did allow this expense. And with that information, I stand for questions, if I can answer.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask, would this videography practices that happen, will they just be shared amongst all the rest of the volunteership, or is there each one going to be doing their own, or would this be something?
Mr. Chairman, Jonah put, the chief of Latier put on a program having to do with the slicers program, which is a new training concept, and I believe, I don't know for sure, but I believe that they're videotaping that presentation that she's doing through the enchanted circle, and I'll bet you they're going to share it amongst the departments that don't have the resources to send people off to that training.
I believe they will share, and I'll follow up on that and let you know what I come up with.
Right.
I will follow up with you on that.
Good suggestion.
So move.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. On to item G, which is a budget adjustment for the solid waste operations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the purpose of this budget adjustment, we're moving $2,000 into non-capital furniture fixture and equipment primarily to allow the solid waste operations to purchase a methane tester, which they will be able to use on their outlined closed landfill sites. It's a requirement by the environment department that we get these tested. Currently, we're paying a contractor a lot of money to do it. Our solid waste director did follow up at the request of the manager and attorney to find out if any certification is required to use this machine. There isn't, and in fact, I believe they're going to come out and walk with them on the first couple go-rounds to teach them how to do it right and obtain the proper readings. And so that's the main purpose of this adjustment. We're also moving $35 into other contractual services to cover a slight deficiency in what I believe is our Bob's Yard contract for the transfer stations. And we're also moving $1,965 into maintenance of vehicle furniture and fixtures just to get us through the year in case anything pops up on any other equipment, vehicles.
Sounds like a good investment. We can bump that $11 surplus up a little bit, maybe?
Maybe.
Commissioners, we have a motion?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, Mr. Cordova. On to item 15, Commissioner's calendar. I believe we have a copy here in a new format, May, June, and July, or May and June.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell.
June 2nd. Is there any way we could, we've got, that looks like beyond a full day with LUR, work study, and animal control work study. Is there any way we could move the animal control work study to the 23rd? I just think we're going to, it's going to be a long meeting that day.
It is a fairly stacked agenda. I don't think it's going to be, it's a regular meeting, so it's not a work study. The ordinance issues will be for discussion only. I guess we have some time between now and then to consider it. It might be a lot, I've thought myself, it might be a lot to do both the animals and the LUR that day. We certainly don't have to make that decision now, but...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so would you, you're considering splitting those up and then having the LUR still on the 2nd and moving the animal one to the 23rd?
I just, either one, it just seems like it's going to be long, because these are going to be work studies, right, on both the LUR and the animal control ordinance?
Yeah, it's hard to say exactly. The LUR is just a series of amendments. I don't know. It would be nice to be able to get them both done that day. I guess, you know, it's not something that we have to certainly decide today, but it's worth thinking about as we get closer to June 2nd. Other things might come up, and so we'll have to take a look at it that week before June 2nd and see if it looks like we can fit them both in. It'd be nice to move those ordinances along finally.
Well, we would have to consider it next week, because the agenda would come out the 29th. I just would appreciate if we had more time with the animal control ordinance, the work study. I'm getting a lot of calls. People aren't happy with it. I'd like to be able to meet with them, and it would give me more time. I will be gone for the training at NMAC the weekend, the week of June 15th, and a lot of people are going to NMAC. So I mean, I'd almost like to push that animal control ordinance back to work study on July 7th.
The, it's not, it's not a, it's not an action item, you know, it's not, we're not going to, although we may, we may pass a resolution to publish, I think we should see how the discussion goes myself. Get it started, you know, a lot of work's been done on it, and I honestly don't think it's going to be all that controversial. There's several items like the leash law where there's a variety of opinions, but I do think it's important that we, that we address it. So I'd like to leave it on there tentatively for both of them, and we'll see what happens next week.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gallegos.
Maybe just through the process of getting the June 2nd meeting is minimize some of the presentations or some of the things that could be on the agenda that could be sent down to the 23rd so that we'll have enough room. So we're not having a stacked agenda with all these things, and we can concentrate more on some of these, too.
Mr. Chairman, the 23rd is when we will adopt the final budget, too, so we'll be our main focus on that date. July, I'd be good with that.
The 23rd is not here on the May calendar, or is it?
June 23rd, it's the last item on...
23rd would be the final adoption of the budget.
Mr. Chairman, are we done with that particular discussion? I had a question with regards to the May 20th, the Camino del Medio Sodder Miller kickoff meeting. Just elaborate on that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is the actual kickoff meeting with Sodder Miller. It'll be held up here at the county courthouse. We're looking at probably holding it upstairs in the executive. If a lot of people are going to attend on that, we would move it down here to the commission chambers. We have both options available to us, and that's the actual kickoff. So they'll have some plan, design, some drawings, everything that's going to be moving forward. They're also going to be talking about some of the road assessments that they've done just recently.
And that is tomorrow?
That's correct.
Do we have a quorum on that, because who's?
I would like to attend.
Okay.
I'm not. I'm out of town.
One Commissioner.
I'd like to attend, too.
There goes me for my road in my district, so I'll just wait to hear from you guys.
And it just would have to be noticed.
No, that's all right. I guess I don't need to.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I would still like to bring back that we move the animal control work study to July 7th. I feel I'm not going to have enough time to meet with the people who have asked me to meet with them concerning this ordinance, and also to meet with Ms. Robinson. I also have some personal business that I need to take care of before the 13th of June, so I'm feeling hard-pressed, and I would ask you to consider moving that animal control workshop, work study to the 7th.
It's not really scheduled as a work study. It's just an item for discussion, and I'd kind of like to get that stuff on the table, but let's wait and see what other items have to be dealt with for that June 2nd meeting.
Mr. Chairman, as long as it does not come for, we pass a resolution for publication, because I do not think we'll be ready to pass a resolution for publication. because I do not think we'll be ready to pass a resolution for publication on June 2nd.
Mr. Chairman, we've waited years on this. I mean, what's another month or so?
Just want to get the discussion going, but as far as Commissioner O'Donnell's request that we not do it as an action item for a potential resolution, that's fine. I think that's a good suggestion. But at least we'll be one step closer, and hopefully then we'll be able to do it even at the second meeting in June, if we lay the groundwork. So is there anything else on the calendar?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I also want to say that the landfill board meeting is tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. here in this room.
All right. Well, we'll move on then to item 15, last item on the agenda, legal matters. This is a discussion regarding threatened litigation, and we can go into executive session under exemption 1015h7.
So move to go into executive session?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Commissioners, we have a motion to come back into session.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Bob, do you want to make a report on the executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the county commission met an executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, exception 1015h7 for pending or threatened litigation. Only an item of threatened litigation was discussed. No other matters were discussed, and no action was taken.
Commissioners, we have a motion to accept Mr. Malone's report.
So move.
I'll second. Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Archuleta, before we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just asked the commission to reconsider on the Camino del Medio project on the 20th. I know that we don't have a notice of quorum, but to me, I think that it's imperative that the commissioner from that district actually attend the meeting. That road is in, I believe, Commissioner Fambro's and possibly Commissioner Romero's district. And it would, to me, I just think it's a disservice that that commissioner's not there representing that district, and it's because we don't have a notice of quorum. So I would just ask the commission to reconsider that in discussion or consideration.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I will withdraw, going to the meeting tomorrow.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell.
So will Councilman Commissioner Gallegos. I won't go either.
All right, well, neither will I, so that's going to leave it up to Commissioner Gabriel Romero and Commissioner Jim Fambro. Good luck, guys. Thank you. Thank you, Candace. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, thank you, and good night.